Good evening. Good evening and welcome to this, the November 27th meeting of the Livermore City Council. I now call the meeting to order. Good evening to you in the audience at home, also in the multi-service center and the police community room. So, you're all on board. So, appreciate that. See, a few, the roll call showed that all the members are present and accounted for with the exception of Steven Spadovski, but I'm sure he's going to be watching at home. So, he'll be apprised of everything. I ask that you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pledge of Allegiance.) (Pledge of Allegiance.)
Thank you very much. And as we go into Proclaimations and Presentations, anybody that has listened to my State of the City address has heard me talk about how the city budget is the numerical representation of one's priorities. And obviously, our number-one priority is public safety. So, our community, for our public safety officers, their top priority is also our community. So, tonight I'd like to acknowledge that that top priority, being our public safety personnel, recognizing No Shave November. You've probably noticed this from last week. This is for the Shop With a Cop. It's to, where police officers take disadvantaged youth and take them shopping so that they can buy gifts for their families and have a holiday season. So, there are a number of police officers and staff members that are part of this. Actually, there's also, the Ale House has their own fundraiser and there's a, see a number of beards in the audience tonight. So, right on. Good job. So, this is to support No Shave November. If you don't care to grow a beard, you can still support it by going to gofundme.com/liveshopwithacop. And that's, you can contribute to the cause there. Also, the other thing is in the lobby of the Police Department, we have a giving tree and there are a number of tags on the tree which show gifts that people need, things like shoes, a warm coat, shirts, these sorts of things. So, very basic supplies that people need and you can go into the Police Department and help out members of the community. Last weekend at Strizzi's, again, the Livermore PD had their Tip a Cop. And that was a fundraiser for the Special Olympics in the area. So, there's a lot of great efforts going on. And not to leave them out, the Livermore Pleasanton Fire Department has also had their hook-and-letter run and also their Fill the Boot campaign. And that's for a number of other local charities. So, a lot of great work coming from our public safety officers that continue to support this community. So, on behalf of the council, thank you to all of the people that serve this community and do such a remarkable job as well. So, thank you for indulging me on that one, but I just have to recognize the great work that's being done in the community. So, with that, we go to Citizens Forum. These are items that are not on the agenda. The City Council can neither deliberate nor take action on items brought up during the Citizens Forum. And I ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. We have Robert Allen, Robert Allen, David McGuigan, Mark Triska. Mr. Allen.
At the ripe old age of 91, I don't hear anything you're saying. As soon as I get through my comments, I'm going to have to leave.
But at least you care.
Because I can't hear. The, there have been two draft EIRs that have gone in for rail projects affecting Livermore. The Tri-Valley, the DEIR for the ACE to, and for the EIR for the D-E-R for the BART. The comment period is closed, but I have a few comments about them anyway that I think you should be aware of. With ACE extending to Manteca, Modesto, Series, Turlock, and Modesto, it'll be important to get the station here in Livermore. Connecting ACE and BART is very crucial to the community's well-being. There are three possible ways of doing that. One is for ACE on 580 to BART, either to Isabel if we get that far, which I hope, or to Dublin Pleasanton. The station was built at Dublin Pleasanton, it was right over a railroad track which has been abandoned, but the idea was for an erode mode places there. And the other possibility for ACE is to go to Radham along Stanley Boulevard and then up along the old SP branch line which has been torn up along the right of way which is now a pipeline for the pipe that SP put in while I was working for them. A third rail, third possibility, is for BART along 580 to Greenville. And it could connect with ACE there at Greenville. That is the, the city's preference according to the petition which is signed by 8,400 voters in Livermore in 2011. So, that's what I would sure like to see preserved. Both of these, well, both of the ACE alternatives will be bifurcating, ACE. So, the ACE train's coming over the Elmont would either go to BART or to San Jose. They couldn't do both. So, that's why I would certainly urge that you don't do with either of the ACE alternatives. They would affect Livermore and I would hope that BART, that the BART alternative gets approved. I'm sorry, I can't hear anything you're saying. I'm going to have to duck out.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Thank you. Dave McGuigan, Mark Triska, Doug Mann.
I usually don't like to repeat myself, but something I said last time caused Mayor Marchand to be unable to control his laughter, even though I was talking about a very serious subject. So, I'm going to go over the thing again to see if we can understand the comedy. I'd like to direct your attention to this article from the East Bay Express from February this year. It's titled, "Previous Allegations of Misconduct May Be Excluded in Exler Moore's Cop Sex Crime Trial," and was written by Darwin Von Graham and Ally Winston. In the article, they discussed a prior complaint registered against ex-officer Black and that Mayor Marchand went way out of his way to deny the prosecution. These include a child custody dispute from July 2010, allegations from two separate women in February 2011, one for having sex with someone and recording it without permission, and the other for having sex with someone under the influence, which is often a euphemism for passed out. And a February 2016 suspected child abuse report. Now, ignoring the inherent conflict of interest in a child custody dispute, I have to believe that any of the other three, if properly investigated, should have led to the dismissal of the, is dismissal from the force. But instead, we have the standard Livermore cover it up and lie about it. Clearly, this is the kind of qualified individual strives, Livermore strives to keep on their police force, covering up his transgressions at least four separate times, the last mere months before he became embroiled in a scandal that the chief couldn't cover up by himself. And that's when the mayor stepped up and refused to prosecute the reports of his prior transgressions, continuing the strong tradition of covering up the transgressions by suppressing them in court, helping to put him back on the street and potentially back in uniform. And as if these morally reprehensible actions weren't bad enough, the mayor has repeatedly lied about it, telling the people there were no allegations of child abuse against ex-officer Black. Well, John Marchand, Mayor of Livermore, if on this, if on the bizarre planet you come from, a suspected child abuse report is not an allegation of child abuse, just what is it? It was at this point that you, Mayor Marchand, started laughing. Now, I have to tell you, you have a kind of a hollow fake laugh that is strangely appropriate for the mayor of a hollow fake city like Livermore. But this is a very siberyous topic, and so I have to ask you, what did you find so funny? Was it funny that a Livermore police officer had multiple complaints of a specifically sexual nature against him that were whitewashed by the chief? Was it funny that an officer also had a suspected child abuse report filed against him that was whitewashed by the chief? Was it funny that he was still in the force to sexually exploit a teenage girl and become embroiled in a scandal that the chief couldn't whitewash? Was it funny you deliberately interfered in his trial to suppress the prior complaints, helping putting him back on the street and potentially back in uniform? Was it funny you lied to the people of Livermore, telling them there were no allegations of child abuse, fully aware of the February 2016 report? Perjury, evidence tampering, sexual predation, child abuse. Just what could anybody find the least bit funny about you and your utterly corrupt police force?
Excuse me. Thank you. Mark Triska, Doug Mann, Greg Scott.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. It's a fitting that this meeting comes after our Thanksgiving celebration and that we all hopefully had a good celebration with our family and our friends. And we have a lot to be thankful for here in our community. We live in a city where we have a community that really cares. We really care about not just our downtown, but we care about our wineries, our open space, we care about our cultural arts, care about our schools, we care about where our children and grandchildren would sometime live in our, in our city. So, we have a real, real community that cares and it's really great to live in a community where everybody really cares about their community. You know, I think it's very important tonight that we respect each other, each other's opinion, and that we're polite about each other's opinions regardless of whether we agree or not, because we are a community that cares and we should come together regardless of whether we agree or disagree with each other. We, the citizens, as well as the council, have spent a lot of money on our community and invested in outreach, invested in consultants, and just a lot of resources. And so, I hope that as a result of this, we can again listen to each other, respect each other's opinions, be polite, and regardless of the outcome that, that outcomes that occur tonight, that we can pull together and work together towards a common good cause. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Triska. Doug Mann, Greg Scott, and Nancy Bankhead. Mr. Mann.
Mayor, council. Mr. Mayor, you know, I too have to take issue with what you've done. I understand that you will not be keeping your beard all the way through the Christmas season. That's a mistake. But what I really came to talk about was that a couple of weeks ago, at the last meeting, I noticed sort of a lot of despondency. There was some discord that council wanted us to hear about, you know, the divisiveness of some, the way things are recently, you know, about the downtown issue. And it actually got to the point of really questioning whether or not the residents believe that the members of the City Council care about the city. And I was sad to hear that. And, you know, I didn't rehearse this, but I believe that if I asked for a show of hands in answer to the question, "Do you believe that every one of our City Council members cares deeply about the city?" I think you'd get a roomful of hands. Because I do believe that you care deeply about the city. Otherwise, you wouldn't be here, spending all of this time for what many times can appear to be a thankless job and one that is just plain hard to do. And it's hard to listen to the public be negative, but that's what serving is. I sometimes have thought, when I hear people running for office, when they say, "Oh, I'm running because I want to give back to the community," or "I have this particular issue that the council isn't, isn't addressing and I know I could do it better." And people say that when they're running. But I, I sort of take a different point of view. What I would say if I were running is, I want to do two things: get yelled at and lose friends. Because those are the two things that actually you can count on them happening. And it's hard, but it's, it's your sacrifice. And I appreciate that sacrifice because we will disagree. And if, I would hope that you make decisions based on what's best for the city, from feedback from the public in general, and not necessarily just a few friends, because you will disappoint some of them. And it's hard to do, but it needs to be done at times. Thank you.
Doug, thank you very much. I sincerely appreciate that. Thank you for that recognition. Greg Scott, Nancy Bankhead.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Marchand, Liver, City of Livermore, City Council and City of Livermore staff. I'm Greg Scott. On Wednesday, November 15th, I met with city staff, too, from the Human Services Division and your Assistant Director of Community and Economic Development, and three officers from the City Police Department. And we discussed the relations with the homeless population. The goal out of this was that a community member and others of us need to document the relations between the City Police Department and what's going on with the homeless out there. After the meeting, we went out into the homeless community. And again, we're hearing one story from the homeless community, we're hearing another one from the Police Department. And just for perspective, I've had no problems with the Police Department myself, personally. I've had one encounter and the police officer was nice about it. So, it's not coming from my personal bias. It's, the stories are coming from the homeless out there. And the fact is that ticketing homeless and harassing homeless, this is not a solution for the homeless, okay? One ticket after another and then a warrant and then a trip to the Santa Rita Jail where belongings are lost. This is no solution. And this urban camping ordinance, I don't understand that because you don't seem to answer the question that I have, is where do you expect the homeless to go? So, if you have this urban camping ordinance and you have no place for the homeless to go, where are the civil rights for the homeless? So, we have, I don't know what you're going to do, if anything. But there is legal precedent, and that is in the United States District Court for the Northern District of California, case number C-17-06051WHA, Notice for Submission of Plan for Shelter of Berkeley Homeless. So, if this is precedent, and it seems to me you'd have legal exposure. If by legal exposure, you can cancel the Livermore Community Thanksgiving Dinner, which I volunteered for two days in 2016, over 1,000 were served at Bothwell Arts Center, hundreds were served shut-ins and elderly. If you can cancel that from legal exposure, it seems to me that you're legally exposed by not offering a place for homeless to go. I still don't understand where you expect the homeless to go. The gift you talk about, a gift for Christmas, I think several would like shelter. Last night it rained, for your information, and there's a number of people out there that don't have shelter. Your metrics are two years old on your survey. This, this is unacceptable. You have the charade on, on the fiscal budget a couple of meetings ago, and you put number-one goal is homelessness. Is this some sort of cruel joke? I don't get it.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Quick question for the city attorney. Did the City of Livermore take action to close the 31-year longstanding Thanksgiving Dinner at the Bothwell?
Not that I'm aware of.
I was understanding that was the Health, the County Health Department. They had the rules set up that they couldn't, couldn't meet.
I can't confirm that. I don't know.
That was my understanding. Okay, thank you. Nancy Bankhead.
Hi. We had our Jim and Minrol show the other weekend, last weekend, I guess. And we always put up a sign over Fourth Street or over North Livermore because we can and it's advertising and it's usually a pretty good deal. Well, they're doubling the amount. It's going to be $700 now to put up that sign and most of the people that use it are nonprofit. And 700 and something dollars is a lot of money to come out of an organization that's a nonprofit. I don't know if it's because somebody from Modesto has to drive all the way down here to put it up, that we can't get somebody local to put it up. I don't know, and I was wondering if you guys could look into that because it's really sad for nonprofits, not, I mean, no better place to put up a sign than on Fourth Street. So, just help us out, okay? Thank you.
If you could check in with Paul Spence or Paul, you know, get in touch with Ms. Bankhead. Thank you.
There's nothing they can do, but it is, so it's right now, that's what we need to do.
Okay, well, we'll get back to that.
We can do a little research and confirm the price and justification for it and get back to Ms. Bankhead.
The price and justification, okay. Thank you. Okay, and so, that's the end of the cards for the Citizens Forum. Moving on to the consent calendar, is there anyone that wishes to pull any item on the consent calendar for discussion? Okay, I do have a speaker card for 4.03, so what I would like to do is get a motion for 4.01, 02, 04, and 05.
I move to accept 01, 02, 04, and 05 on the consent calendar.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Moved by Councilmember Carling, seconded by Councilmember Coomer. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passed unanimously. Brent, 4.03.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Luckily, I've got the easy one to deal with tonight, the leash law.
We had it at the beginning of the meeting, too.
Yes. So, I know this was brought up earlier in the last one, and now you're looking to amend it to exclude the police canine from the leash restriction, which is great. What I'd ask you to do is maybe instead of specifying police, maybe first responder canines, because we may run into a situation that would have to come back and get reevaluated, search and rescue. I run through shelters, I find search and rescue dogs that can go down to the search and rescue program. If those dogs come into Livermore to try to find someone, technically, they have to be on a six-foot leash. So, if you could just maybe formulate language, first responder canine or something like that, that would incorporate all of the theme of regulated canines, so this doesn't have to be readdressed again.
Interesting point, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. One of those interesting things that you need to have the experience to, to look at that. Mr. City Attorney, is that something that you'd be willing to?
That actually makes a great deal of sense, and I'm trying to find the language right now to see if we can do this on the fly as opposed to bringing this back at your next meeting for a first reading. I'm not that quick.
I saw you running through there real fast.
Yeah. So, what I would request, Mr. Mayor, is that we continue this item and I'll bring it back for first reading at your December 11th meeting.
Okay.
For an introduction and make that additional change.
Okay, so that way we could have our search and rescue dogs, not on a leash. Okay. That makes sense? Okay, thank you very much for the comment.
Thank you.
Obviously, this is where having experience helps.
Definitely.
Great, thank you. Okay, so 4.03 will be coming back to the council for the first reading. On to matters for consideration. Okay, so, this is a discussion in direction regarding the downtown public engagement. So, we are going to hear from the staff. We have Steve Stewart, the Planning Manager, and David Early, who many of you, I'm sure, recognize from the over, more than 30 public events for outreach. So, remarkable job putting all of that together. And again, I acknowledge the two members from the Steering Committee that were up here that began and launched that whole effort. So, certainly thank you for that and look forward to the report. Mr. Stewart, Mr. Early.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So, back in August, you directed staff in the consulting firm Placeworks to conduct public outreach related to developing the city's downtown catalyst sites. David Early from Placeworks is here this evening and will present the results of that public engagement plan. He'll also provide a brief look back at the series of events leading up to the public engagement process, and then also have some recommendations for next steps. Following David's presentation, I'll give you a brief summary of the discussions with the Livermore Stockman's Rodeo Association and also council direction on reaching out to the business and property owners along the north side of First Street to talk about their interests in, in using additional property behind their businesses. And so, with that, we'll turn it over to David Early from Placeworks now.
There we go. Good evening, council members. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. I'm David Early with Placeworks, and I am going to give you a brief introduction to the process that we've gone through and the results of that process in terms of engaging the community regarding downtown development. Tonight, I'm going to be going over just a little bit of background about the project, talk about our project process, talk about the total participation in the process, the demographics of the participants, the prioritization worksheets that we distributed and the results from those, the key themes of public input, and I'll wrap up with just a very brief introduction to the recommendations that we have for your direction. I do want to point out that all of the information I'm going to go through is in a written report that's been distributed to you and is available to the public, and copies of the presentation here this evening, as well as a second presentation that I have prepared to give later this evening. Copies of both of those are available for you and members of the public as well. So, to give a little bit of background about the project, I think you all and most of our audience are familiar with this. In February of this year, you identified planning for the downtown as one of your top priorities. And in March, you appointed a 19-person steering committee that oversaw the creation of the process, which is now complete. That committee met from April until July of this year. They held nine steering committee meetings and they did three major things. The first, most probably most important, is that they did devise the outreach plan that we've now implemented. At the same time, they reviewed background information and created a set of key learnings that became the foundations of that public participation process. And they also drafted four initial land use concepts that were another keystone within the process and that allowed members of the public to respond to them and give input about what they saw as important issues in downtown development. Then, we took all of that information and that outline of a process put together by the committee, and we implemented it from September until early this month. I'll be talking today about the many different types of involvement we had, but it was a very robust process and one that was put together and approved by that steering committee. So, here we are tonight to talk about that process, and I want to begin by talking a little bit about how we got the word out. We did have a project website which got very robust traffic. I'll talk about that in a little while. We had social media with 75 posts over these two and a half months to Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and Nextdoor.com. We had a display at the library about the downtown planning process, as we did have at the downtown kiosk as well. We had posters and flyers placed at local businesses. We had unpaid news stories in The Independent, The East Bay Times, Patch.com, and actually a TV news story on KNBC-TV. And then we had paid print advertising with total, 21 total ads. So, we had quite an effort to get the word out about the process, and I think that it was very successful, as you'll see in the numbers that I'm going to report to you in terms of participation. The process itself, other than the outreach to tell people about the process, consisted of the items that you see on this slide. We held two community-wide workshops as well as five neighborhood district workshops. Those seven workshops in total were identical to each other. We let people know that there was no need to attend more than one of them. We still had several hundred participants at them in total, and we had several people who opted to come to all seven of them, even though participation at one was, was enough to get one's opinions heard. In addition to those seven workshops, we had two tours of the downtown. We were at 11 separate pop-up events, and you see the numbers listed here, Farmer's Market, Public Libraries, The Art Walk, La Spacita's College, and so on. We had president associations to schools and community organizations, and we had a very robust online engagement process, which I'll talk about in a little more detail later. Now, from here on out, we have a new process that are the end of this process that we're going to be commencing with you this evening. Tonight, we anticipate that you'll hear this presentation from me and that you'll take public comment. You will then go into reviewing the recommended direction. And as I mentioned, I have a separate slide presentation that I can give briefly at that point to help to guide your direction. And then you will convene among yourselves and give And then, you will convene among yourselves and give direction to us this evening. We, as staff and consultants, are hopeful that your direction will be to narrow things down to one, or two, or perhaps at most three new concepts that you'll be speaking with us about. We will go off and redraw those concepts so that you have them before you, and we will evaluate them in a written evaluation, all of which will come back to you at a future meeting, probably in January or so, when you will again have public comment, look at those new concepts, look at our evaluation of them, and then make a final selection among them. So, we're hopeful that this process, starting tonight, is one where you can whittle things down to just a few concepts that still need to be explored. We'll look at some alternatives for you on those concepts, bring them back to you with an evaluation, and have you ready to make a final direction, final decision in twenty-eight, early 2018. Let me talk a little bit now about our participation in the process. We did receive over a thousand, one thousand and thirty-eight, to be example, written comments through multiple channels in our process. We collected fifty-three comment cards at meetings like this one. People have been filling out cards this evening. We had cards with written comments, and we collected fifty-three of those. We issued workbooks that were primarily intended for members of the public to use as their own tool for getting their own thoughts in order as they participated in other ways, but we said we would collect those as well from folks who wanted to turn them in, and we got thirty-nine of those. On the YourLivermore.org website, we had a special comment box. It wasn't the only way to participate, but it was one way to leave a comment. We got a hundred and thirty-six comments there. We got three hundred and twelve additional comments through other parts of the website, and we got four hundred and seventy-seven downtown prioritization worksheets with comments on them. So, that's a total of a thousand and thirty-eight written comments that we received. In addition to that, we did have additional online engagement tools, as I mentioned already, and I want to talk just a little bit in more detail about what those were. It was possible to fill out that evaluation workbook online. Remember, we got thirty-nine of those on paper. We received another fifty-five workbook responses electronically. We had people review the four concepts that were created by the steering committee. We got a hundred and seventy-two comments that way. We had two hundred and forty users who filled out the downtown ranking worksheet online, and we added those to the other ranking worksheets that we received on paper. We had a hundred and sixteen users who completed the build-your-own-concept exercise, and you see photos of those, two of those concepts here on the right. Everyone who participated in that was able to color-code a map with what they thought would be appropriate uses in the downtown, and to see the results of their work in terms of the square feet and numbers of uses, the units that they were creating, and the parking demand and parking supply that they created. We also, on the virtual downtown tour, we had a downtown tour online that people could engage in and leave comments. Thirteen people used that, and we collected an additional seventy comments from general users there. So, as you can see from these two sources, the public comments with a thousand and thirty-eight comments, and then hundreds of users online as well, we received quite a large number of comments in those ways. And then, in addition to that, we were collecting land use concepts. As I already mentioned, we had a hundred and sixteen of those submitted online. We also had seventy-six small groups at our workshops, and they all created their own concepts, and seven hand-drawn concepts. So, that's close to two hundred individual land use concepts that we collected through this process. All of those, all of those comments, all of those concepts have been made available to you and to members of the public, both online and through the appendices to our report that we've submitted to you this evening, and I trust you've had some chance to go through them. So, with that said, this is a summary of the total number of respondents that we had in the process. Five hundred and fifty-two participants at those seven district and community workshops, twenty-nine people on the downtown tours, seven hundred and fifteen individuals who came to our pop-up events, four hundred and forty-five people who attended those eleven community presentations, and three hundred and sixty-seven people who engaged with us online. That's a total of two thousand one hundred and eight participants. We certainly know that there's some overlap among those. In other words, a single individual might have gone to a workshop, attended a tour, and also stopped by one of the pop-up events, but we don't think there's a lot of overlap there, and we feel confident that our total number of participants in this process certainly approaches the two thousand mark, and we feel very good about that. We really tried very hard to create a process here that was one that would get to more than the number of folks who can come to a community meeting or community workshop, and I think we were successful in that regard in engaging such a large number of participants. Now, I do want to speak to you next about the demographics of the participants, and because particularly you, as a council, expressed a very strong desire that we create a process that would not involve, not only involve greater numbers of people, but also involve a broad spectrum of Livermore's demographics, people of all ages, of all walks of life, of all incomes, from all parts of the community, all ethnic groups. So, we really tried to make sure that we had a process that could appeal to all of those groups, and we tracked those demographics so we could report to you on our success. And what I want to say to you in this regard is two things. One is that I feel that we made a lot of success in that regard. We were able to involve a very broad range of participants. I think honestly, both a greater number and a greater range than we have seen on other processes, either here in the city of Livermore or on other processes that I've worked on as a consultant in other cities. And I'll show you some of these numbers in a minute. And at the same time, I think we need to acknowledge that despite the great efforts that we made, our participants in this process did tend to fit some of the demographics that I think you've seen on previous processes as well. Our participants, when compared to the city of Livermore's population as a whole, tended to be older than the city's population, they tended to be wealthier, that is, they had higher incomes, they were more predominantly white, they came from certain geographic areas of the city, particularly the southern portion of the city, and they tended to be longer-term residents than when you compare to the city's population as a whole. And for that reason, in every respect we've looked at, we have tried to tag for you any places where the responses for different demographic groups differed from one group to the next, so that we can let you know where those differences occurred, and you can take that into account as well. So, let me quickly run through some comparisons on those demographics, just going into a little more detail of the points I summarized before. This chart shows demographics by neighborhood, and in general, on all these charts, you'll see a red bar, which is the city's population as a whole, and then the blue bars show our participation. You can see here that the blue bars for our participation are higher for southeast and southwest Livermore, and lower for central, northeast, and northwest. So, we did have disproportionately more people from the south part of the city and disproportionately fewer people from the north and central part of the city. Length of residence, we could not make a one-to-one comparison because we asked for numbers of residents different from those asked for in the census, but by looking at this chart, you can see in general that our outreach got forty-three percent people who'd lived here for twenty years or more, but only fifteen percent of the population has lived here twenty-five years or more. And so, we have disproportionate representation of this group that's lived here longer, less representation compared to these bars from people who've lived here for a shorter period of time. On age, a larger percentage of people in Livermore, over fifty percent, are in the eighteen to forty-four demographic. Those folks were underrepresented, whereas people older, particularly people sixty-five and older, were represented at almost double the rate that they actually make up within the population. Race and ethnicity, I'm very proud to say that we did manage to get seven percent, almost eight percent Hispanic and Latino participation, and almost six percent Asian population respondents. Those unfortunately are only about half of the actual demographic of those groups in the population, and so, in that sense, the whites in our sampling were a higher percentage than in the community as a whole. Blacks, or African-Americans and American Indians make up very small percentage of Livermore's population. We were able to get those populations involved at about the rate that they exist in the population as a whole, but those are both in the one or less than one percent range. And then, finally, on household income, Livermore is overall a pretty wealthy area. More than fifty percent of the population in Livermore has an income which is considered moderate or above moderate, and that's a great thing about the city of Livermore. Even better for our survey respondents, almost three-quarters of them fit within that group. Folks with lower income, particularly extremely low incomes, were disproportionately underrepresented within the group. So, again, just to summarize here, I think we can feel very good about the larger numbers of people in some of these lower socioeconomic groups, in Latino and Asian populations, folks who've lived here a shorter period of time, they did have representation in our process. However, they were not as well represented as we might have hoped. Going to shift gears now and talk about our prioritization worksheets. I imagine almost everyone in the audience filled one of these out. We collected one thousand three hundred and thirty-seven of these worksheets at workshops, our pop-up events, the presentations that we made, and online. We summarized all of those results from every worksheet that was completely filled out. We did have some that were only partially completed, and those didn't provide good information, and so, those are not part of the representation of the sample that we've got here. They do provide a very interesting snapshot of what's important to folks here in the city, and this is the average number that was given to each of those. Remember, the lowest number is the most important thing, so a person who put a one on something said, "That's my highest, my number-one priority." And the highest, the lowest number, meaning the highest priority, that was given to any individual item on average was parking, which got a score of three-point-eight. And you can see that those scores then go, moved through community character, open space, traffic and circulation, hotel, retail, hotel location, cultural facilities, public finance, and housing, and housing got the highest score, that is, the lowest priority, at numbers, an average score of seven. Now, there were some differences on these among some of our demographic groups. We found a neighborhood location, we actually didn't see any differences, but on the other demographic items, we did see a difference. Folks who've lived here for a shorter time, who were underrepresented in our sample, tended to put a lower priority on parking and the location of the hotel, and they had a higher priority for additional retail in the downtown. Folks who were younger, another underrepresented group, put a lower priority on parking and the hotel location. They had a higher priority for retail, financial stability, and creation of housing. Non-white residents placed a lower priority on hotel location and a higher priority on both developing a hotel in general and on cultural facilities. And people with a lower income relative to our sample size overall placed a lower priority on community character and the hotel, and a higher priority on cultural facilities. So, that's just a little food for thought. I'll come back when I talk about some of the other key themes and talk about some other differences, particularly on length of residence and age. And now, for the part which, to me at least, is some of the most interesting, is the key themes that emerged. And what we've done, going back to this list, is we've taken each of these concepts, now I've messed up my slides, hang on, sorry about that, there, this list, so in this order of importance, I'm going to go through all the issues from parking, community character on down, all the way to housing, and give you a summary of some of the key themes that we were able to glean from all the two thousand-plus responses that we saw through this process. As I talk about those, again, I do want to note that they are presented in that order of importance from the priority worksheets, and I also want to mention that I'm going to show some sketches, as I would call them, in some of these drawing, in some of these themes, and I want to just point out that these are still very conceptual in nature. They're not intended by any means to be designs, but they're just little drawings to give you a graphic sense of what we're speaking about on each of these themes. And the first theme is the theme of parking, and what we heard very strongly is a desire for sufficient parking to replace both the existing parking spaces on the downtown sites and also to meet future demand. And in general, what we understand future demand to be is that amount of parking that's generated through the zoning code. We did also hear some commenters who were concerned about the adequacy of the city's parking standards as found in the zoning code. There was general support for the I Street Garage parking expansion. There was support for a garage in the southwest corner of the site that you see here, and a desire to retain or expand parking adjacent to the Bankhead Theater that serves handicapped people as well. There is some parking in this lot for handicapped residents right now, or handicapped users of the Bankhead that's in the southern portion of this lot. Folks felt very strongly that that needed to be retained or even expanded. As I mentioned, there were also concerns noted that the city's parking standards may be too low. There was a desire, particularly among older respondents, to see parking in close proximity to final destinations, and there was an interest in converting any new surface parking to future uses if market support could allow for that. So, it may be possible, for instance, to take several surface parking lots, combine them in the future into a single parking structure, and then free up additional land for additional uses in the downtown. So, that's a summary of some of the key themes on parking. The second most important issue was community character and design, and there was strong support for maintaining Livermore's historic character and for creating new architecture and new development that is consistent with that historic character. There was particularly a strong appreciation for the brickwork in the architecture here and the heavy lumber that we see as traditional building materials, and also in the trellis work and other streetscape improvements along First Street, a strong desire to see that move forward in the architecture and design of any new development. There was a limit, a desire to limit new buildings to three stories or less, or no higher than the Bankhead Theater, and there was a concern that some new development, if it were masked incorrectly, could be incompatible with Blacksmith Square and might overshadow it. There was a desire to make sure that development in that immediate area would be consistent with Blacksmith Square as an area. The next item that was to be looked at, and my slides are not advancing, but I'm sure they will soon. Can I get any help in the back? There, look at that. Is it going to go forward three times now? Let me just try and adjust here. Up there it is. Now, I pushed the button too many times, right? Is it going to go again? Okay, hopefully, I'm good. So, there was a very strong support for open space as a key element within the downtown, and I think that cannot, we can't overemphasize how much support there was for that. And the most popular open space configuration was an east-west linear green, like you see in the picture here, one that would extend all the way from L Street through the site to South Livermore Avenue. There was also support for a rectilinear town green attached to a town plaza in the configuration you see here, fronting onto South Livermore Avenue with a smaller plaza somewhere near Livermore Avenue and a larger green a little farther back. There was also some support for an outdoor amphitheater as part of one of those open space configurations, but there were others who strongly felt that there was no need for an outdoor amphitheater and that there should really be a focus on usable areas, both in the plaza form and even more so as open green space, usable grassy green space. So, those were some of the most important themes in regard to open space. The next theme was traffic, roadways, and walkways, and we heard very strong support for a new east-west access road going through the site. During the key learnings, it was mentioned that this block is very large compared to other city blocks in the downtown. This east-west street would help to cut this large site into several blocks and make it more walkable and usable, and folks who engaged in the process in all different forms seemed to agree with that. There was additional support for a north-south street that would be essentially an extension of K Street up here, going through the site from railroad to that new east-west street, and there was also strong support for either pedestrian or vehicular connections along the two spines that already run between the buildings on First Street and could also connect through to that new east-west street. There was also some concern expressed about development, increasing traffic downtown, and of course, as a consultant team and working with your committee, we've been working very hard to address those concerns and look very closely at the amount of traffic that would be generated by any new downtown development. The next theme is the hotel, and there was strong support in general for a boutique hotel in the downtown. Seventy-five of our seventy-six groups, for instance, in the workshops, put a hotel somewhere on their site. The most support was for a west-side hotel, although there was also significant support for an east-side hotel. Reasons for the west side that were given repeatedly by some of the participants were that it would leave more room for adjacent open space, it would create less congestion than on the east side, people felt that the views out of the hotel rooms would be different, and people felt that it would reduce the number of housing units that could be built on the west side, and they saw that as a plus because they wanted to see less housing, and therefore, they hoped to take up some of the space with a downtown hotel. In terms of an east-side hotel, the folks who liked it, mentioned the fact that there was, the timing appeared to be more opportune. There's a developer already in place looking to do the east side, who has a plan for an east-side hotel. They pointed to the synergy with the Bankhead Theater and other adjoining uses. They liked the idea of masking the bankhead's existing unadorned wall, and they were concerned that a west-side hotel could loom over Blacksmith Square and be architecturally incompatible with the Blacksmith Square development. Most of our participants did agree with the overall finding that came out of our key learnings, that regardless of which side of the street it on, it should face onto its learnings, that regardless of which side of the street it on, it should face onto South Livermore Avenue. And so we ended up with a hotel that would either perhaps look something like the one you see here, or perhaps like the one proposed by the developer for the east side of the site, as you see here. The hotel location, not the question of just having a hotel, but having a hotel was supported by almost everyone. The importance of where the hotel was exactly was most important to folks who were older and longer-term residents, and actually less important to folks who were younger and had lived here for a shorter time. Those people tended to, people who were here younger and had lived here for a shorter time, tended to just feel that the hotel should get built, but not so much, didn't have as much concern about it. Although, interestingly, if you disaggregate their results, the younger folks and the folks who lived here for a shorter time actually preferred the east side as opposed to west side, even though our entire pool preferred the west side over the east side. Moving along to a conference center, there was general support for a conference center to the extent there is market demand for it. More than half the workshop small groups included a conference center within the hotel. There was general agreement on a facility size of 2,000 square feet, which is the size that has been supported by our work through the key learnings, our consultants who came in and talked to us, and also by the current developer. There were, however, a limited number of people who very strongly supported a facility that would be larger than 2,000 square feet. In terms of retail, there was a desire for new restaurants, an open-air market, specialty shops, and youth and teen-oriented businesses. And there was an understanding, I think, from our key learnings, that other more traditional retailing, off-price retailing, large-format retailing probably could not be accommodated in the downtown. But again, strong support for the items you see listed here in that first bullet. There was also support for mixed use, that is, with retail on the ground floor and housing or office uses above it as a format for that retail space. And there was a general agreement to place that retail space either along South Livermore Avenue or along the new east-west street that would bisect the site, with the understanding that that retail really did need the exposure that a high-traffic street would offer. There was also interest in adding flexible use areas to the backs of the businesses along First Street, both this piece of First Street between L and Livermore, and then also along, going from Livermore Avenue to the Bankhead Theater, the areas that you see in beige here. There was a fair number of people who were interested in allowing businesses to expand into those areas to become flexible uses, perhaps for seating, perhaps for service, perhaps for storage, as might be needed by those businesses. We did also look, of course, at office. Office space was not a key concern for most of our participants, but if included, office was typically located on the western side and in a mixed-use format with retail on the ground floor and the office space above it. Of course, we talked about cultural facilities. There was a desire for cultural facilities, although that was somewhat mixed. Some people were very strongly in favor of such facilities. Others would support them, provided that they did not receive a public subsidy. And some people didn't think that a cultural facility of any sort was really needed. I think there was a predominance in favor of some facilities, but particularly if they can be paid for without public subsidy. Some examples of the kinds of cultural facilities we saw included science education centers, museums, art galleries, a wine country visitor center, and public art. And generally speaking, to the extent these were built facilities, we found those on the west side, the west side, adjacent to whatever open space was there, although certainly there were some concepts, particularly those concepts that had multiple cultural facilities in them, tended to put one of those on the east side as well. We got comments about public finance. There were relatively few of them, relatively little interest, unfortunately, in public finance, although I know for the city council, of course, it's a strong consideration. But some of the most common comments, you'll be happy to know, were that folks wanted to see a limit on city subsidy for new development and a desire to minimize the ongoing operating costs for the city of Livermore. And then finally, our last item was to talk about housing. There were a variety of points of view on housing. For some, there was a concern that housing would negatively impact the downtown, and which led some people to oppose housing in the downtown altogether. But many more felt that they could accept housing if necessary, particularly if there were financial reasons or project feasibility reasons to support it. And as all of you know, there has been a $14.5 million loan from the city to itself to buy these sites, which would need to be repaid if housing were not constructed. And so most of the participants in our process did feel that housing could be warranted on the site, and some even felt that housing would add vitality, provide options for seniors, households without children, and other Livermore residents. So I would say the strongest opinion was that housing is acceptable. The next strongest was that housing is actually desirable, and we did have a minority who felt that there should be no housing under any circumstance at all. When housing was placed, it was most commonly placed on the west side, and it was particularly placed, as you see here, in the northwest corner of the site, with some additional housing to the extent the numbers allowed for it, moving towards the east from that nucleus at the corner of L and Railroad. Generally speaking, when housing was included, those folks who did include it had anywhere from 110 to 170 housing units on the site, and they put them in a variety of housing types, which included townhouses and apartments and live-work. There was quite a robust discussion at many of our meetings and in many of our fora about cohousing, which had been proposed as one of the concepts. Some people thought it was a great idea and really wanted to see it explored in Livermore, and others were quite concerned about it and wanted to make sure it would not occur in the city of Livermore. So that was one place where we had strongly mixed opinions. So that summarizes the key findings. I did want to just conclude by talking about the recommended direction that we have to share with you this evening and as you move forward. I do have a separate slideshow that goes through that recommended direction, but I want to tell you right now, I trust you've seen it in the written materials, it is very similar in its points to what I just went over in terms of the responses from the public. And of course, that's been our charge, is to summarize that public opinion and bring it back to you as a series of recommended actions or directions. And so rather than go over that slideshow now, I wanted to alert you that it exists. It is available for those who want to see it on paper right away, and I will be available to give it to you and actually to use it as a framework for your discussion when you've heard the public testimony and you're ready to go into that direction tonight. The slides are here, they do largely mirror the key themes, and I'll make them available to you at whatever time you're ready to finish the public comment and move forward with your discussion. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions before you take public comment. Oh, and actually, I'm going to turn it back over to Steve, who's going to wrap up, and then do public comment.
Thanks, David.
And your questions.
So just following up on a couple of matters that the council initiated back in September. One was for staff to meet with the Livermore Stockman's Rodeo Association to discuss the possibility of amending an agreement between the city and the Stockmans that limits development of an approximately two-acre property at the end of Pacific Avenue to civic center and park uses. And the Pacific Avenue site, and actually the current civic center campus, were once part of the original rodeo grounds. The city acquired 33 acres to develop the civic center site, including the two-acre parcel that's shown on the screen. And let's see, I've got to get around the equipment here. So here's Pacific Avenue and the building we're all in right now. So the vacant parcel lies between the city's photovoltaic field here and then the Sunken Gardens Skate Park and Field associated with the church over to the east. So an agreement between the Stockman and the city limit development on the property to civic center, park, and recreational uses. So staff did meet with the Stockman representatives and understand they are seeking construction of a park and placement of public art to celebrate the city's rodeo history, recognize the Stockman's contribution to Livermore's Western Heritage, and commemorate Livermore veterans. Within that park, they envision an open space that's suitable for activities such as picnicking and other outdoor recreational activities. The city does continue to seek sites for constructing housing affordable for all income levels, and a local nonprofit housing developer has expressed interest in developing an affordable senior apartment complex on the Pacific Avenue site. Based on discussions with the Stockmans, they would be open to amending that agreement with the city to allow senior housing development on the Pacific Avenue site if the requirement to build a park satisfying the Stockman's goals were transferred to the Livermore Village site downtown. There would be a number of technical steps necessary to move forward in developing the Pacific Avenue site, including density design and funding analyses, and a request for a proposal to actually select a nonprofit builder and owner. Such a project would also require council consideration of a general plan amendment, rezoning subdivision, and design review for developing that Pacific Avenue site. And so just to summarize, the Stockman's deal points would be for an open space for community use, public art to celebrate the city's rodeo history, and honor Livermore area veterans from both Murray and Pleasanton Townships, and naming of the park to recognize the Stockman's contribution to Livermore's Western Heritage. So the council also directed staff back in September to reach out to business and property owners along the north side of First Street on both sides of Livermore Avenue. And that was to gauge their interest in owning or having access to additional land behind their businesses for a range of uses. So staff did make contact with business and property owners by phone and letters. Generally, several owners expressed interest in discussing the opportunity further. General interest included space for outdoor dining, delivery, garbage service, access, and also storage. So staff would recommend that the needs of those businesses be considered in the development of a final plan. The details of the use of that property, whether through a license agreement, lease, or actual sale, would require additional consideration. And so that's it on those two matters initiated. On the screen now is just a summary of the staff recommendation that's in your staff report. That is to accept the public engagement plan and provide direction on next steps, and then also provide direction on the Livermore Stockman's Rodeo Association proposal, and also the land adjacent to the north side of First Street business and property owners. And that concludes our presentation. Again, David and I and the team are available for questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions for consultants, Congressman Carling?
I don't have any particular question. I did, before we go to public comment, though, I did want to make sure that I had a few remarks to make. First of all, I'd like to thank all of the staff and our consultant, David Early, his colleague, Carrie, and others at Placeworks that have helped with all this. It's been a big job. And I also like to thank all the 2,000-plus people that participated in the outreach process. I thank you for your time and energy in this. I think it's obvious that this is an important step for this community, and I think it's admirable that folks found the time and had the energy to participate as much as they did. So thank you for that. And I think also, I think this is the biggest outreach process, if you will, that the city has ever undertaken. And again, it's been a lot of work, not only for the staff, but Placeworks, and certainly for many of you in the audience and others that have participated. So again, I thank you for all of that. I do want to make, though, some have expressed concern, I've heard this, about the process, but I've also heard just as many people applaud the opportunity for their voices to be heard. So be mindful that some people think that this process has been flawed, and I suppose anything could be improved, but there's plenty of other people that have appreciated the time and the energy that we, the city, and the residents have put into this. Secondly, to the folks that are about to speak to us, and I don't know how many we're up to now, 70-ish or maybe more?
Eighty.
Eighty. I certainly appreciate your enthusiasm and your willingness to get in front of us tonight to give us your opinions, but as mentioned earlier, I'd like to recommend that you be mindful that all of us are here for one reason, and that's because we like and love the city. And we're all trying to do the right thing. And we want this to be a vibrant, exciting city in which to live and bring friends, bring folks in to enjoy the wineries, the science, and all the other amenities that we have to offer. But please remember that just because you don't agree with somebody's opinion doesn't give you the license to make some negative remark about what somebody has to say. Too many times over the last few months, I've heard, you know, adjectives used about somebody's opinion that I think is just unnecessary. Just because somebody has a different opinion doesn't make it right or wrong, it's just different. So please keep that in mind. We're all after the same thing, a vibrant, exciting quality of life for Livermore. And you may be a strong advocate for a west-side hotel, doesn't mean that just because somebody has an east-side bent that they're wrong, it's just different. So please be mindful of that. And I'm looking forward to hearing what people have to say, and looking forward to the discussion that we're going to have amongst ourselves here once the conclusion of public comment. So that's why I just wanted to make those few remarks before we get started, and I'm sure that other colleagues up here will have something they might want to say too as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Congressman Coomer?
Thank you. Just one question for Mr. Early. Given that the demographic profile that you came up with was, I would say, expected almost, but that, you know, it kind of proved out some things and didn't seem particularly, I won't say not inclusive, it certainly, we hit a lot of communities. Is there anything you would do differently in your outreach? Do we find any deficiencies or any failure to reach certain populations? Obviously, that's up to the individual to respond. So what, any suggestions?
Honestly, I think we did all the right things. I think we could have done some of them more. So we did, for instance, go to communities where we knew that there would be Spanish speakers and that the Latino-Hispanic community would be represented. We went to certain school events, library events, to the Spanish-language mass. All of those were places where we did get participation from Spanish speakers, who of course are largely Latino and Hispanic, and yet we didn't do enough of those to offset the fact that those are honestly disenfranchised groups in our society. They don't always participate to the extent that they make up our population. So I think, you know, to the extent your question is, what could we do differently if we do a process like this again, I think really the answer is to keep doing those same things, but just plan to do them even more. As a percentage of the overall effort, I think we needed to do them even more than we did to reach younger people, people who lived here a shorter time, people, non-white people, all of those groups can be best addressed by going to them, to the locations where they are doing activities already, and asking for them to participate. We got some participation that way, we got good participation that way, and we would have gotten even more if we'd have just done that even more.
Yeah, and don't take this as harsh criticism or anything, because I think you did a fabulous job, really outstanding with getting the results we got and engaging so many people in the community. Just thought maybe if there's a way, you know, we maybe change the demographic look a little bit.
Right. Well, thank you for saying that, and no offense taken. I mean, I wish we'd had more, and I think that is how we could have gotten a little more.
Congressman Warner?
Just a couple of thoughts. One, I'd like to second everything that Councilmember Carling said. We experienced the steering committee together and endured a lot, and it was, I think, overall the whole process has been very worthwhile, and I'd like to commend everyone for all the work put into this, the staff, Placeworks, and all the people that contributed. What I would add to what was already said is, first, for people to be patient and really allow the process to work. We are now past the information gathering stage, and what we need to do is a pretty thorough analysis, and I would say a rational thought process as to how to arrive at what we're going to do. I think we've heard that there's no demand, no output from all of this that says, "This is the one plan, the perfect plan that's going to satisfy everybody. We're going to have to make trade-offs, and we're going to have to have reasons for making those trade-offs." And in order to go through that, it's going to take a very disciplined effort. And in order to go through that, it's going to take a very disciplined effort. And I would just suggest that we do need that patience and not jump to conclusions. And what I really mean by that, as an example, is the hotel location shouldn't be an end in itself, but it should be the result of a thorough analysis. And so there's no, we have to have reasons for putting something somewhere, and all that's true of all of the elements. And I would expect at the end of our deliberations, we will have been able to enumerate them and come to something. But what we're about, my understanding is, we've got all this information, we'll hear the comments again tonight, and then we'll begin to deliberate as to what are the key elements. So we're not talking about a particular plan, and my expectation would be that we'll be able to very consistently direct staff onto what those key elements are that we're looking for, and that they'll come back with a couple of plans, not more than two, I would hope, that we could then, with a thorough analysis, and that based on that analysis, in which we do take into account the practicality of everything, in addition to the objectives that we're trying to get here, but can we really build it, and can we afford it? And once we get into that, I think the answers will become pretty clear and compelling.
Thank you, Councilmember Warner. I agree with all my colleagues up here, and with Doug Mann, appreciate his comments, that we're up here for a reason, that we care very deeply about this community. And again, tremendous effort, you are correct, this is the most widespread and the largest outreach that I have ever seen, even beyond the general plan review, which was a big deal, with a, that was a 22-man committee, I think, but didn't have nearly the outreach that this did. But again, thank you for everyone that's, for all those 2,108 people that participated, and the people that are here tonight, I look forward to all of your comments, and the tremendous effort that staff did, and you guys were just pedal of the metal the whole time, so thank you. And we'll be taking a lot of this information and distilling it down, and coming up with what is going to be the best. So with that, remember, we've already gotten 2,100 comments, so many of the comments have already been heard. And a lot of you have participated in the effort previously, so we've got a lot of your comments already. Now please, we're not trying to limit anybody talking tonight, we certainly want to hear what everybody has to say. We do have 80 cards, so, and I don't want to cut everybody off, so I know everybody is used to three minutes, so I don't want to suddenly cut that and say you guys are going to have to abbreviate your comments, because that, a lot of times, people will just go to three minutes anyway. So what we're going to do is, I want to hear from everyone, we want to hear from everybody. And so three minutes, at three minutes, finish your comment, there'll be a buzz. After that, we're going to turn off the mics, so please, I want to hear everybody, give everybody equal time. With that said, I don't want anybody to give their time to anybody else. You got three minutes, and that's, everybody has the same amount of time, so we'll agree to that. Also, I don't allow booing. As Councilmember Carling suggested, we're trying to maintain a reasoned and polite conversation up here, so I don't allow booing. But then again, for equal time, we don't allow applause either, because I don't want any of the speakers to feel intimidated when they get up there. Because if there's applause, or hoo-ha, or whatever, speakers may feel intimidated if they feel that they're not carrying the same opinion as everybody else. As Councilmember Carling pointed out, we've had some unpleasant discourse during this whole process. So no booing, no applause, but if you agree with what the person is saying, the speaker's back is to the audience, so they're not going to see if you agree with them or not. So if you agree with the speaker, just raise your hand. And that way, the council can see the opinions in the audience, it doesn't intimidate the speaker. Because I want everybody that speaks to feel comfortable addressing the council, because they're already nervous talking to the council. So this puts everybody at ease, okay? And with that... Okay, so the first two cards have threes, is that for citizens? Oh, okay, all right, very good then, okay. So with that, I've got 80 cards, three minutes. If somebody else has already said what you wanted to say, you can just as well say, "I agree completely with them," and we will note your comments. So I will, I'm going to read off four names at a time, because I know we've got people out in the multi-service center and also in the police community room, so I want to make sure that everybody has time to get over here. So with that, Carla Zaragoza, Palak Gularia, David Kent, and Darcy Kent. So Carla Zaragoza.
Good evening, Mayor Marshawn, Livermore City Council members and city staff. My name is Carla Zaragoza, and I am a sophomore at Granada High School, and I am addressing the need of a science faculty in our downtown. I've been living in Livermore for about four years now, and in those years, my life has changed completely. Never did I imagine that moving here would make a huge impact on my life. In the future, I want to become a physical therapist, I would also like to run my own foundation. I would like to make a change any way possible by simply helping out people out. One of my main priorities is to help out my kind of people who are never, who have never looked up to. I want to change that. When I grow up, I want people to look up to me and say, "She's Hispanic, she did it, why can't I?" Now, how does this relate to science, you may ask? Well, I am 15 years old and never have really been exposed to science, as I would have liked. Having a science learning center in Livermore would benefit so many people who are either trying to be better under, who have, trying to get a better understanding, or simply love science and want to keep learning. And yes, there might be those who say, "Why make a science learning center if not everyone likes science?" Not everyone is going to like science, and there's not, and if they're, never try. But we can change that if we get more people into science. Thank you for your time.
You're talking to a chemist, so I love science. Actually, you've got a couple of chemists up here, and a physicist, so we're all about science. Okay, Palak Gularia, David Kent, Darcy Kent, and Lisa Tramovich.
Good evening, Mayor Marshawn, Livermore City Council members and city staff. My name is Palak Gularia, I'm 13 years old and in eighth grade at Mendenhall Middle School, and I'm here to support the decision to create a science center here in Livermore. I love science, words cannot express how much science means to me. I have been a lifelong enthusiast in my very short life so far of science, and will continue to enjoy the bliss that it brings me. I personally wish to pursue a career in the scientific field, just like countless other girls and boys and many adults in our community. Every career I've ever wanted has been within the spectrum of science, a vet, a doctor, a paleontologist, and my most passionate, my most passionate goal yet, to be a part of the group to colonize Mars. Initially, I got the very lucky opportunity as a child living in the Bay Area to visit places like the Tech Museum and the Cal Academy of Science. However, my family moved to Livermore six years ago, and since then, the chances to visit these exciting places has drastically shrunk. Going there is expensive, difficult, and long, and if I, a girl, living in a privileged household, visits these places so rarely, rarely, then what about the less privileged kids here in Livermore? They would never get the chance to gain further knowledge in what could be a future career. If we had a center for the sciences, more children could have a chance to indulge in this very successful and very interesting field. It can, it can and will open new minds to passions and create ideas. Opening a center is exactly what we need to create geniuses who are creative, passionate, and hardworking. If it wasn't for the things around me, the buildings, and the places I could go, I would not have the same fiery passion for science as I do now. I can barely imagine what a science center here would do to the curious minds of my friends and children of our great city. I truly hope you make the best decision for our city, its people, and our children, because they are our future. Quote, "Our greatest natural resource is in the minds of our children," Walt Disney. Thank you and have a great night.
Thank you very much. And look behind you. Thank you. David Kent, Darcy Kent, Lisa Tramovich, Dave Finster.
Good evening. I'm David Kent, and I'm speaking in favor of the unified vision, which includes space for a privately funded science center that our two previous speakers endorsed. First, I would like to thank the council, the Steering Committee, the city staff, and Placeworks for managing a very complicated, very challenging outreach and process, and I really believe it was, it was fair, it was impartial. Nothing is perfect, but it was an extremely good job at bringing out new voices, getting new people to the table, getting new ideas out, and I think that was the intent, and I think this, this process has, has worked out extremely well. The unified concept came out of this process. Most of the contributors had never met each other before the outreach meetings. We're, we're sitting in the hallways after the, the speakers are going on, we're comparing notes, people are grabbing each other by the shoulders and saying, "Look, we should work together on this." And, you know, unfortunately, I think the unresolved dispute over where the hotel should go was really drowning out a lot of the other conversation of what we would like to see in our downtown. And the contributors to the unified concept were really trying to synthesize these things and end up with something that would be really worthy of the great city of Livermore. And our principles for this were really simple and threefold. One was build for the future, two, repay the debt, and three, let the council, with expert staff and, and other experts, make the determination on which corner to build the hotel on. Building for the future is the most important. The future of wine country is dependent on Livermore becoming a wine country destination. And this needs to be a town where our children can also, can live and thrive. So affordable housing, affordable workforce housing has got to be part of this plan as well. The unified concept really can pencil out, it can repay the debt, because it has a balance between housing, affordable housing, and the hotel, and lots of open space. And the Stockman proposal really makes that open space possible, because it allows us to move, you know, approximately 100 affordable housing units onto Pacific Avenue, leaving more room for open space in the downtown. And where the hotel goes, you guys have to decide. An urban hotel and an apartment building look the same from the street visually, either will be a better gateway coming up on Livermore Avenue, and I think it's, it's going to be the elegant solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kent. Darcy Kent, Lisa Tramovich, Dave Finster, Evan Branning.
Mayor Marshawn, and the council, thank you for allowing us to be a part of this process. I am here to describe the unified vision and what this would look like. The, the, the basic concept is that this is an incredible gift, 8.2 acres in the core of downtown, something those people would kill for. Any city would love to have the ability to, to draw on this plan and to create something that gives back to the community for generations to come, and to give our current residents a place that we can love and come to and enjoy. It starts with a central plaza, the Stockman's Park and Plaza. This would be a large open space area, a half-acre park where people could come and picnic and play with their kids, and just enjoy being in our beautiful, beautiful weather and our beautiful community. From that, we would first radiate out to First Street. There's at least five pedestrian park pathways that would radiate out to our restaurant and our shopping core, which is the First Street Avenue. It's an amazing downtown, and what we've been seeing it transform into over the last 15 years has been incredible. So having a lot of pathways to that and access to, to First Street is a must. It would also have a very broad and tree-lined winding pathway that would stretch all the way from L Street to the Bankhead Plaza. So this winding pathway would connect it to the theater district. So that would give us a direct, that would be a nice thoroughfare. It would be bordered on, on the, along, it would be bordered on a few sides by our historic district, which is our Bankhead Square. This would be expanded. Bankhead Square has so many opportunities for us that we've never had before in Livermore. We can have small shops that are designed for first-time owners or first-time renters. These could be artisans, it could be a small café, a chef trying for the first time to have a farm-to-table concept. It could be a brewery, a tasting room, a honey, cell shop for people growing honey and olive oil. The possibilities are wonderful, but if the real emphasis of Bankhead Square would be to, I mean, of Blacksmith Square, sorry, sorry, I'm nervous, would be to, to support startup businesses. Next to that would be a science, Center for the Science and Society, as our two previous speakers said, ditto, and then along the back, a blacks, a black box theater to support our arts community, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Lisa Tramovich, Dave Finster, Evan Branning, Dale Kay.
Hi, I'm Lisa Tramovich, I live in Pistonaway, and I'm the artistic director of Livermore Shakespeare Festival. I'm here both as an individual and representing the company. Honorable mayor and councilmembers, city staff, wouldn't it be great if the community you're charged with leading would collaborate and bring citizens together around a vision that creates excitement, inclusion, prosperity, and even joy? Wouldn't it be great if Livermore's support of innovation and new ideas included new ideas in arts and sciences as extensions of a community conversation? Wouldn't it be great if the council of 2017 was known as the one that retired a large debt instead of dropping it in the laps of future generations? We can do it with your leadership. The unified concept brings together many constituents and more each week around a vision. We've learned to create win-win scenarios where activities and design complement and support one another. We're proving that we can collaborate and bring community members together. The unified concept includes the possibility of our raising money, I'm not looking for a handout, for a building with a small flexible theater that supports the types of programming that can't be in the Bankhead. In the 150-seat range, it can be financially viable, yet inexpensive to run, host new plays on contemporary topics, develop local directors, young thought leaders, and educational programming that invites diverse voices representative of our whole community. In an innovative design opportunity, it could support outdoor music and wine events and cultural celebrations like Cinco de Mayo that bring our community's cultures together. FYI, LSF plans to keep the Shakespeare Festival in the vineyards. The unified concept assumes the city would adopt affordable workforce housing in downtown and work with the Stockman to create the senior affordable on the Pacific site. It's the honorable thing to do. We took money from an affordable housing fund. We owe the housing, and our citizens need it. The cultural assets envisioned are already generating funding interest. LSF, doing its due diligence, has a Hewlett-funded feasibility study and business plan underway executed by the NCC LF, the Northern California Community Loan Fund, so we are prepared, if given the opportunity, to fundraise for a building that supports in part a small theater space. Livermore may be a small city, but to quote Shakespeare, "Though she be but little, she is fierce." We can fit a lot of who we are on a small space at the heart of our downtown while being fiscally responsible. We can provide for the future with appropriate housing, events of interest to diverse citizens, and build on the success of Blacksmith Square. Give us this opportunity, and we will pull together and make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave Finster? Dave Finster, Evan Branning, Dale Kay, Asa Strout.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name's Dave Finster. I'm the current president of the Livermore Stockman's Rodeo Association. The rodeo association supports this unified concept for downtown. We think this type of vision does many things for the downtown development. It gives the public a centrally-located park in the heart of downtown. We like the idea of the park having a large grass area surrounded by trees and lots of shade. There could also be a structure for kids to play on, as this would be the type of park people could actively use and enjoy. We also like the idea of having the park next to Blacksmith Square. This is a very popular gathering place in town and would tie in great with the theme of Stockman's Park. In this park, there could be a plaza where we'd be able to recognize the town's ranching and rodeo history. There could also be a structure that would honor all war veterans, including those from the Pleasanton and Murray townships of World War I. This kind of park could also fill the agreement the city made with the rodeo association over 55 years ago, where the city agreed to build a park recognizing the rodeo association for its contributions to the city with a memorial honoring our veterans. One of our favorite ideas of this park is the surrounding businesses, particularly the high-end steakhouse that I've heard some people want to put in. Because if there's one thing this old ranching community knows, it's a good steak. So in closing, I do have to say how excited all of us are at the rodeo association to have this opportunity to work with the city and other community groups on this vision for downtown. We will be celebrating our 100th rodeo this coming year. Wouldn't it be great for the Livermore residents to be able to celebrate 100 years of rodeo history along with a new beginning of a new down park and development? Thank you for your time.
Mr. Finster, thank you very much. Evan Branning, Dale Kay, Asa Strout, and Sheri Nigg. What's Branning?
Good evening. My name is Evan Branning, and I would like to start by thanking the mayor, city council, and the staff, as well as Placeworks for all of the hard work they've done on this process. I greatly appreciate the amount of effort and outreach that has been placed, and I would like to start, if possible, to ask a quick question, which is, were the statistics for the different priorities weighted at all to represent better the demographics of Livermore? And if not, would that be possible? Would they be able to answer?
Go ahead and finish your comments.
Thank you. So that's one of my major concerns currently. Other than that, I'd like to say that I've been working with other members of the community, talking to people under 55 about what their priorities are and trying to get a better sense for it. As you know, often at city council meetings, the youth of Livermore are wildly underrepresented, or represented, sorry. And I'm very glad to see that many of them turned out today, although while many have, still, the audience here is a crowd that is wider, older, and richer than Livermore is in general. I hope our comments are taken seriously, and I know that Asa will be speaking specifically about some of our priorities. With that in mind, I would like to say that some of the things that are very important to all of us is that housing is treated as a priority with this. In this project, we have the opportunity to build workforce housing for teachers such as myself. If we do not prioritize our incoming teachers, firefighters, police, first responders, we will end up with them moving to Tracy and beyond, and soon, the commute will not be worth it for them to live here and work, for them to work here. By pushing out our first responders and teachers, we're going to end up with a society that I don't believe is one that we would like to see. I hope that while we're considering the housing, we look at putting in the maximum amount possible, as well as looking at options such as mixed use to try to expand on that, and in addition, making as much as possible, preferably all of it, into low to moderate income housing. Lastly, I would just like to remind the council and mayor that what we have right now is a situation where, from my perspective, it seems as if the elderly are mortgaging our future for better parking, and I do not want to see that. I want to see housing in a vibrant downtown that will last well until my retirement. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Branning. Mr. Stewart, there was a question about statistics.
I can go ahead and answer that. The results that we've shown are not weighted in any way. We have given both the complete results, and then we've shown the breakdown. We did think about whether it would be possible to actually give you weighted results, which of course we would have done in addition to the raw results, but we concluded that because much of the work, much of the information we have is more qualitative in nature, that it wasn't possible really to weight it in a meaningful way. And so I would suggest instead that both the commenters and the council take into account the proportionate representation of the different participant groups, understanding that these are raw results and that they're not weighted in any way, that you need to make those judgments on your own. Because again, we felt like we couldn't meaningfully weight them to give you different scores.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Dale Kay, Asa Strout, Sheri Nigg, Victoria Fierce.
Good evening, Mayor Mashon and members of city council. I am Dale Kay. I was on the downtown steering committee, which was an amazing experience. I'm the CEO of Innovation Tri Valley Leadership Group, which is a collaboration of leaders who promote the quality of life and innovation assets in this area to ensure and sustain economic vitality. We feel that the elements of the unified vision are relevant and visionary. I think we should be really grateful to the people that met again and get, because they have a passion for this area, and they also have the vision to have compassion to build for today, not just for today, but for the future. That's what's so impressive to us. Innovation Tri Valley, like so many people that have spoken, have been very focused on their need for housing. This is not only essential for attracting companies here, it is essential for keeping companies here. These people also need a place for their workforce. Housing is a part of the unified vision. That is so important to us. This area also, as other people have mentioned, has been waiting for, what, 20 years to build a downtown hotel. We have an excellent proposal from our hotelier, and it would be a shame to let this go. Because this is, as David Kent said, this is key to making Livermore a wine country destination. And it also fits the needs of area companies. The hotel is part of this vision. I think that there is no insistence on where it be placed or the respect it's given to the city to make that decision. So I think the unified plan is nothing short of brilliant. It proposes privately-funded amenities like the science museum and perhaps a black box theater, along with the open space that people in this community want so much. So it's up to the city, we know, it's up to this city council and to staff to place these elements and to work with developers and to decide what is feasible. So we're pulling for you. If it's done, if anyone can do it, I think it's this council and this staff. And I have, as part of the outreach, I have to say, I have worked for city governments around the country, and I have never seen an outreach like this, so congratulations. It has been amazingly inclusive, very creative, and Mr. Mann is right. We all feel that you're doing a great job, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Kay. Asa Strout, Sheri Nigg, Victoria Fierce.
Hi, I'm Asa Strout, Livermore resident. Actually have a letter on behalf, hopefully I'll be able to read it in time. Over the next few months, you will be making a decision on the future of the downtown development plan. Your decisions will have an impact on our downtown and our city for generations to come. Today, I'm speaking on behalf of over 60 residents and business owners that we have come together not to endorse a specific plan, but to share a list of priorities that we believe that the city of Livermore should consider when making their decision on Livermore downtown development. The city of Livermore's first priority should be to maximize the number of workforce and affordable housing as feasibly possible within the downtown development. These are homes for our teachers, our nurses, our firefighters, and our first responders. They're the places to live for single parents, our children, our grandchildren, and our friends. If Livermore does not fully support the development of workforce housing and affordable housing, then we are going to see those who serve the city and those we care about moving to cities like Tracy, Sacramento, and even outside the state. The second priority of the city of Livermore should focus on creating a vibrant, diverse, and usable retail space. To date, Livermore has done a great job making downtown what it is today, a modern and attractive downtown to eat, drink, and be merry. Partnering with Livermore Downtown Inc. has made the events attractive to people all over the bay. The missing piece to making Livermore downtown truly stand out is a focal point to Livermore's downtown. There is an opportunity to add more sit-in restaurants and places to get a drink, but the real opportunity lies with the chance to attract retail experiences that are not available today. The more diverse the retail becomes, the more attractive the downtown becomes. The last priority of the city of Livermore needs to follow is having a vision of downtown Livermore that is driven by actual data and long-term focus. The amount of emotion put into decision-making within politics is always high, and downtown Livermore is no different. As a city, we have spent thousands of dollars gathering data, studying it, and putting it together. To throw that away to fulfill the emotional decisions on how we think downtown development will work is a waste and a rebuff to everyone who has worked on the downtown development process. Whatever decision we come to for our beloved downtown, it should have an emphasis on the future. What we build today will be used for our children as we grow old and as they grow old, and our grandchildren as we grow old. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strout. Sheri Nigg, Victoria Fierce, Stephen Dunbar, Brendan Adams.
Good evening. Thank you, city leadership, city staff, for your time and your commitment to this process. I would like to endorse the Livermore citizens' unified vision for downtown. Concerned citizens from the ranching, scientific, wine-growing, business, and performing arts communities have put this together. As a 50-year resident, I can say that this plan, to me, looks like Livermore and is a win for everyone. It is a properly-sized boutique hotel that can be built on the east side or the west side, a big boost for downtown merchants and retail growth. It's also key to making Livermore a wine country destination. This plan enhances the Blacksmith Square instead of overshadowing it. It adds new retail space that will be smaller and more affordable than places and spaces on First Street. Because the unified concept can be phased in, it eliminates the need for a master developer and will have very little loss of parking during construction. It will add the new L Street parking garage, which nearby businesses have been waiting years for, and it will keep surface lot parking behind the Ale House and Uncle Hughes. The street design will allow for eyes on the newly-created Stockman's Park and Plaza, which will keep it a safe park for everyone and make it easier for police to patrol. The Stockman's Park and Plaza honors our ranching heritage and our veterans, which is long overdue. This plan adds 140 workforce housing units in the downtown, a much smaller number than Lennar and the Friends of Livermore had plans for, and adds 100 affordable apartments near the city council offices. A privately-funded cultural core featuring 150-seat black box theater district, which is key for emerging performers and organizations. This plan is sustainable and won't burden businesses or future generations with higher taxes. This plan demonstrates that when people really listen to each other, the process can work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nigg. Victoria Fierce, Stephen Dunbar, Brendan Adams, Mary Burnham.
Hi, my name is Victoria Fierce. I'm here on behalf of the California Renters Legal Advocacy and Education Fund, CARLA. We're a 501(c)(3) organization in California for the purpose of promoting and expanding access to affordable housing through the enforcement of housing law. The city of Livermore has an obligation to follow all relevant laws and regulations in the course of its business, of course, considering we are in the state of California. This brings me to the proposal put forth tonight to put non-housing uses on top of parcels acquired in 2009 and 2010. That's 2121 and 2139 Railroad Avenue. One of those was acquired through a grant through the state's Housing and Community Development Department. California Code of Regulations Title 25, Section 7153 says that money from HCD grants has to be used for affordable housing. And what's being proposed is general development, which is not affordable housing. That's not really a good use of this money. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund does not, well, rather, you did not borrow money from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund owns this land. You spent $14 million on this land, and you're trying to kick these low-income people out to the outskirts of town. That's not cool. So CARLA has filed lawsuits against any other cities. We've won in Berkeley, Lafayette, we're going after Salzlito next. So if you've got any questions about this, please let me know. Do not kick poor people out to the outskirts of town. It's right next to the Ace Corridor. People need this to, you know, afford to live out here. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Dunbar, Brendan Adams, Mary Burnham, Alan Burnham.
Good evening, council. My name is Stephen Dunbar. I am currently a resident of Hayward. I will soon be a resident of Livermore, next month probably. You have added my employer to Livermore in the recent past, about 800 new employees. I can afford to live here because I'm an engineer, but they cannot because they make production wages and they live in Tracy and Modesto and Fresno and Stockton and farther. You need more housing downtown. You have to build, you have to build housing to accommodate the people that you've added through your own business outreach. And the reason I say you need a more affordable, you need housing downtown, not just affordable housing, is the state's going to make you build it. You have to make, you, as council members, have to make the trade-off of, if you're going to build it, where do you build it? And I know there's the term "doublinization" thrown around a whole lot. And doublinization is really expanding out into the hills. And so the trade-off is, how much do you expand out into the hills, and how much do you build downtown? And I encourage you to build downtown for environmental reasons, as well as many, many other reasons. So I encourage you to build as many affordable units downtown as you possibly can on this lot, on the Stockton lot, together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunbar. Brendan Adams, Mary Burnham, Alan Burnham, Alyssa Perry.
Good evening, council. Thank you for having me. My name's Brendan Adams, and I've got a lot of thoughts going through my head, so I'll do my best to organize them. I think the unifying theme we hear here tonight is that downtown Livermore is a pleasant place that we all care deeply about. It's a great place, I think, that you will really notice that small blocks, walkable, small independent stores, no seas of parking lots, that really make it an enjoyable experience. Something that I've always thought is that if we love something, we should want other people to enjoy it as well. And for that reason, I'm here to support more housing in downtown Livermore. I think there are two issues that the council hopefully is very concerned with here tonight. The first is the feasibility of some of these plans. In the report, the council has noted the cost of improving city services means that there's no guarantee that the city won't lose millions of dollars on any of these projects. There's also no guarantee that retail will succeed in this age of Amazon. I think Christmas shopping has shown a lot of us that when we have to do our shopping nowadays, we don't necessarily go to the store, and that makes retail difficult. Another concern is traffic and parking. Now, I think that there is one way that we can solve both of these issues at the same time. We can build housing downtown. We can build the Stockman's Park. We can provide retail experiences, and we can provide a built-in market of people who don't need to drive to these attractions and can really provide that vibrant experience in downtown Livermore. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Mary Burnham, Alan Burnham, Alyssa Perry, Rochelle Snedeker.
I'm Mary Burnham, and I'm reading a letter written by Stephen Azavito, who couldn't be here tonight because of illness. Dear Livermore City Council, I am writing in support of the Livermore Science and Society Center proposed for downtown Livermore. As a 38-year Livermore downtown resident and parent, and as a retired LLNL research engineer, I am convinced that such a facility would be of great benefit to all our citizens, especially young people. Having volunteered in many regional programs of science education, including Math Count's Tri Valley, or rather, Tri Valley, now Alameda County, Science and Engineering Fair, LLNL's Science on Saturday, National Center for Science Education Oakland, and others, I am passionate about the ways science and society interact to improve the world around us. Educational programs that are relevant and interesting to a Educational programs that are relevant and interesting to a wide audience are important for making these topics more accessible. The center would be a tremendous asset to the city of Livermore and surrounding communities. The goals and objectives spelled out in the LSSC planning documents have many of the elements that, in my opinion, would inspire all of us to become more knowledgeable. Further, downtown Livermore would be the perfect place for such a community and regional center. Known for its two national laboratories and close links to first-rate universities, our city center would provide a natural home for the LSSC. Like myself and those citizens proposing the LSSC, there are many technical and scientific members of our community who would be willing to donate time and resources to this project. Let's make it a reality. I strongly urge you to consider the LSSC proposal for downtown Livermore. Thank you sincerely, Stephen Azavito.
Thank you. Alan Burnham, Alyssa Perry, Rochelle Snedeker.
Thank you. Alan Burnham from Findlay Way. I'm here tonight to advocate the inclusion of a science learning center in downtown Livermore, and I've made a specific proposal, which you can read about in more detail on my webpage. Its focus is to educate people of all ages about the science that affects their daily lives and should be influencing the societal decisions we must make regarding our future. I've discussed this science center with many people and have gotten very positive response. Steve Azvito is one example. I have also interacted with others in the community to identify ways that this center can interact synergistically with other efforts, including the Tri Valley STEM Center proposed at the airport, which addresses the more intensive participation of kids wishing to pursue science and technology activities related to aviation, and adjacent black box theater, which would explore important human impact issues of chosen scientific topics through performing and visual arts, as well as talks by guest scientists. The latter interaction, which occurred concurrently with and independent of discussions about building interfaith housing at the end of Pacific Avenue in return for a park dedicated to the Stockman in the downtown, led to what is now called the Unified Concept. I endorse this Unified Concept as an excellent example of how a cultural arts and sciences core could be established downtown. The value of such a core is much greater than the sum of its parts. I want to be clear that my endorsement is not the exclusion of any comparable layout that might be conceived, and it's not to say anything against the Arts Career Center that others have proposed. That's really a completely separate issue. It's merely a statement that the Unified Concept is the best example to date for how to celebrate both the cultural heritage of Livermore and the beauty of both nature and the creativity of the human mind. Although science is the basis of our economic growth, I didn't become a scientist for a high-paying job. As a junior in high school, I learned the fascinating story of the periodic chart of elements, SPD and F orbitals, and the relationship between atomic structure and reactivity. That led to a wonderful, fascinating career, and I got paid very well as a bonus. But science is not just for scientists. We need both the general public and elected officials to understand issues such as how oxidation, reverse osmosis, capacity of deionization, and Darcy's Law affect future water supplies, how electricity storage affects the penetration rate and viability and reliability of renewable energy, and how autonomous vehicles affect rational and cost-effective urban planning and mass transit decisions. I plan to pursue this center regardless of what you decide. However, I hope the council can discern a vision transcending the cacophony about where to put the hotel and adopt a pathway for the downtown development plan that reflects the best inspiration and creativity Livermore has to offer. Thank you.
I actually worked on capacity deionization. Okay, Alyssa Perry, Rochelle Snedeker, Colin Ponce, Brooke Witherspoon.
Thank you, Mayor Marchand. Fellow city council members and city staff for allowing me to speak tonight. Just a little bit about myself. My name is Alyssa Perry. I am 23 years old. I'm a Livermore native and a past Livermore rodeo queen back in 2013. I currently am the Associate Director with the Livermore Rodeo. Rodeo and livestock have been in my veins, thanks to the generations before me. Without the heritage and history I've learned about this town, I wouldn't be as involved with my community as I am today. This is why myself and many of my friends and family support the unified downtown vision. I believe this park will help preserve our history for younger generations to come to learn, play, and grow in our community, just as I have. I also work for the Livermore Valley Joint Unified School District as a parent educator in the Special Education Department. I seeing children laugh and play on the structures at their schools and taking my own siblings and younger relatives to the Livermore parks around the town, it enhances their love to play outside. Adding an additional park alongside Blacksmith Square will help the younger and current generations learn about Livermore's history and rich heritage all in one place. I'm proud of my town and the rich western heritage it holds. I want that to be available for future generations to enjoy with their families and friends, so everyone can love and appreciate the Livermore community as much as I do. Thank you.
Ms. Perry, thank you. Rochelle Snedeker, Colin Ponce, Brooke Witherspoon.
Hello, mayor and council members. I'm Rochelle Snedeker, Livermore Downtown Inc. Executive Director. I've never been the queen of anything, but...
You're the queen of our downtown.
Except my home. Tonight is exciting as we are one step closer to this next phase of downtown revitalization. Let's look at a little history, though, first, of the revitalization of commercial downtown cores and the importance of business and health and vitality in America. Small business owners are the backbone of America and always have been. Downtowns were the central gathering place for commerce, entertainment, and just plain living. The '50s and '60s caused a decline in support for local business. The culture of the time wanted new and shiny, so fled downtown for shopping center and mall experiences. Downtowns became vacant and historic buildings destroyed. In the '80s, historic preservation was realized. We can't just save buildings, we must bring back business. In the '90s, shop local campaigns began gaining momentum. In early 2000, Wall Street royally messed up. This was a momentum surge for Main Street. What keeps America great, locally-owned businesses, was once again being realized. In 2005, we saw locals come and invest because of the streetscape. They believed in this community, and we need to keep believing in them. Businesses downtown are not just businesses. They are people who live in and love this community, and they believe in keeping the downtown healthy and vital. Their livelihood depends on it. The elements that matter to Livermore downtown, as we've been, you know, discussing this with all of you and walking around and having meetings, what is most important to the Livermore downtown community is the cross streets break, that block, that big block up. We do need cross streets to break that up, to ensure traffic and pedestrian circulation. The hotel, make sure east or west, you do what's best. That's kind of our mantra. For the downtown business connection. A floating hotel will not help us. Keeping it connected to pedestrian, connection to the commercial district is very important. First Street Business Delivery and Garbage Truck Access and Garbage Enclosures, very, very important. I love that Mark, I don't know if I'm giving him credit for this term, but I love how he talks about our free-range garbage dumpsters. We need to get them collected in a coop, and that's, that needs to be coming. I'm using that for the Stockman. Pedestrian connection and circulation amongst all parts of the neighborhood. That includes Second and Third Street. That's downtown as well. We keep seeming to overlook that. Surface parking behind First Street Businesses on west side of Livermore Avenue. Parking lot at corner of L and First, as previously planned. Appropriately-sized retail to complete the blocks were needed with street presence. Housing appropriate and needed to relieve the debt. Open space partnership with Stockman's Association sounds brilliant. We need to dig deep into that and see how we can make it happen. LDI wants to publicly thank the Unified Group for showing that Livermore can work together. Our city seal shows our components as cowboys, wineries, and scientists. I guess I can stop there and say, I think we're pulling it all together, and it's amazing to see us do that.
Thank you very much. Colin Ponce, Brooke Witherspoon, Liz Roberts, Mary Ann Brent.
Mayor and council members, thank you for letting me speak. I'm here to speak in support of more housing in downtown Livermore and in Livermore in general. But let me say, speak more generally about sort of what I want in Livermore. I want a city that is walkable and bikeable and has nice places to walk and bike. I want great public transit. I want this to be a city that is a great place for our children to live and to grow. I want a city that's smaller than a place like Oakland, but is still vibrant and bustling and has different kinds of people in it. I want people who work in offices and people who work outside, and athletes and artists, and people with multicolored mohawks for their hair. I want people who challenge the way I see the world because they're different than I am. But we need to recognize that with different kinds of people and different kinds of jobs come different income levels. That's the reality. And I want Livermore to be a place where people with different income levels can build a life here and do that without sacrificing their savings and their retirements. I don't want Livermore to just be an enclave of the wealthy. But the blunt truth is, in the past couple decades, it's gone a long way in that direction. For the past 20 years, housing prices in Livermore have tripled relative to incomes that have stayed essentially flat. That's made Livermore unaffordable for a lot of people, and that's not fair. This needs to be a more affordable city. There's a lot to love about this city, and I want it to be a city that different kinds of people can love. And there's just no way around it. If we're going to achieve that, we need more housing and more affordable housing, and if we don't get that, then our teachers and our firefighters and our police officers will move to Tracy and beyond, and then they'll stop coming here. So let's work on that. Thank you.
Mr. Ponce, thank you. Brooke Witherspoon, Liz Roberts, Mary Ann Brent, Chris Chandler.
Good evening, council members and staff. My name is Brooke Witherspoon, and I am owner of the First Street Ale House in downtown Livermore. I just wanted to take a moment to thank you for all the time and diligence you're putting into this development of the downtown parcel. I think we all know we only have one opportunity to do this right, so I'm thanking us all for the input we're putting here. I love most of the concepts that have been proposed over the last few years, and I don't have strong preferences as to where certain components should be placed. I do, however, want to keep the focus on parking, traffic flow, and the accessibility to First and Second and Third Streets. I envision the First Street Businesses creating dual frontages so that our establishments are equally as welcoming from the back as they are from First Street. It would be ideal if those property owners had the ability to purchase some of the land behind them to create patios or exhibits to best represent their businesses. I thank you for reaching out to us in regards to that. It will also be imperative that a commitment is made to create access for deliveries, garbage trucks, and space for garbage enclosures. Having been in business in downtown for over 17 years, we have been a part of this revitalization plan for quite some time now. We are very much looking forward to the next stage of development, and will continue to serve this community for as long as we can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're looking to take a break around 9:15. So let's go, Liz Roberts, Mary Ann Brent, and Chris Chandler. No, no, you're good, you're good. I wouldn't cut you off like that.
All right, good. Let's see if I can reach his microphone. Okay, is that good? I'll sit on my tippy toes. Oh, good evening, mayor, council members, and city staff. I am Liz Roberts, President of Livermore Downtown Inc., Board of Directors. I'm also co-owner of Livermore School of Dance, and I'm also a resident of the city of Livermore. I want to first thank you for all the work, time, and patience you have put into getting our downtown development plan into action. I enjoyed participating in the neighborhood and community workshops that were held earlier this year throughout Livermore. They were fantastic. It gave the residents, business owners, and stakeholders a chance to voice their opinions, suggestions, ideas, visions, and what they would like to see in the development of our downtown. I listened, and I learned a lot through this process. I am intrigued by the unified downtown concept. It covers every interest of the Livermore community and embraces all the visions and ideas that the citizens have expressed they want to see. I believe this concept would be a win-win for everyone in Livermore, including our businesses, organizations, artists, scientists, families, friends, and tourists. A place for all of us to dine, play, shop, learn, and enjoy. Being a downtown business owner, I'm very excited to see this development get started. We know how awesome Livermore already is, and in completing this final phase of our downtown is going to make it even more amazing. This is something that was promised to the downtown businesses years ago. We have to finish what we started and fulfill the promise that was given to them. I have to say personally that I'm really thrilled about the unified concept of the black box stage area. As an artist, I'm very excited to see this be built and be available to local and community artists. Also, the two different options to park are terrific street surface and garage parking. I'm still in favor of the hotel on the east side, but if it's on the west side, I will still love it. Stockman's Park is going to be beautiful, and I realize how much the community is in favor of this open space. More retail is needed and will be a wonderful addition to our downtown. A steakhouse and a public market would be awesome as well. I know this redevelopment project has been challenging for all. We have made many, we've had many differences of opinions, disputes over the housing, open space, housing, parking, hotels, retails, et cetera, but it is time to collaborate with one another and start putting this concept into action and get it done. We all win once we get the final phase of our downtown started and completed. I have a lot of faith in the city council that they will make the right decisions and choices for our community. I'm eager to see this vision become a reality for us to enjoy in the very near future and for our future generations to come. Let's do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Mary Ann Brent and Chris Chandler, and then a couple-minute break.
Mr. Mayor, council members and staff, Ralph Moyer, husband Ralph Moyer and I applaud the hard work done by the Downtown Steering Committee these past months. We especially admire the outreach opportunities they have offered to residents. It's pretty amazing. We, we like the concept of a west-side hotel entrance off Livermore Avenue because it is the spacious village green that supports a community gathering place and encourages interactions with, it could be artisan retail, that doesn't compete with Amazon, a science center, a small theater, and cultural activities nearby. We think that Livermore Avenue is a logical location for the hotel because 580 directs people to downtown via the Livermore Avenue exit. Also, we find it, let's not forget that the elderly who like to, who like to attend the Bankhead Events, they find it very hard to cross the streets because they walk slowly. And it would be great if they could be parking next to the Bankhead. This hasn't been mentioned very much, and I know that there's a great blooming of youthful enthusiasm, and, and there are things that the young people want, but let's not forget the elderly who find it hard to get around sometimes. So we support the Downtown Steering Committee's concept and ask the council to review it and to begin the hotel and village green construction as a first phase. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Chandler.
Good evening, Mayor Marchand, council. I'm Chris Chandler, the Executive Director of the Livermore Valley Wine Growers Association. The Livermore Valley Wine Growers Association would like to thank the city, council, staff, and placeworks for conducting such an informative and comprehensive community outreach process. The wine growers have supported and respected the process laid out, and now we look forward to next steps by the council to move us closer toward breaking ground. We are advocates of the concepts and the unified vision, in case you don't have a copy, and we support housing, cultural, retail, and open space amenities. Our priority has been and will continue to be a hotel. The Wine Growers Association has a preference for an iconic hotel next to the Bankhead Theater. We remain consistent in calling for the soonest opening of the best possible hotel, ultimately wherever the mayor and the council determine it is best located. We trust the city council to sift through all the community feedback and move forward on a spectacular hotel and culturally vibrant downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chandler. Okay, we're going to take about a five-minute break, and we'll follow that with Rifka Several, Dave David, and Andrew Barker. We're bringing it on back, folks. Thank you very much. So we're on to part two of our long day's journey into night. So at that, I'd like to ask for Rifka Several, Dave David, Andrew Barker, and Josh Cowman. Okay, Rifka Several.
Hi, I'm Rifka Several. I work at...
I work at Los Pacitas College, and I'd like to thank you all for a very creative and inclusive process. I was happy to be part of one of the evening workshops with fellow citizens. And I wanted to say that the evening I was there, my group and the other tables really were supporting a west-side hotel. They saw that as a way to enliven the entire open space, retail, and housing concept, and they felt that the open space would be an asset to the hotel and convention guests as well. This would also allow for the necessary parking at the Bankhead, which came up time and again in the groups, especially the handicap parking, which is so much needed. I would hope that there's space near the Bankhead reserved for future arts development, especially for the youth of this town, so that there could be an arts education facility. I wanted to make a footnote on the cohousing because the groups that I was with did not really approve of the cohousing, and it was kind of pushed aside. But after this meeting, I talked to a lot of my friends who are young professionals, the students, young families, and they accepted it very enthusiastically. So I'm hoping, even though there was perhaps a low turnout with the population that was polled on cohousing, that it isn't totally off the table. They're gone, but I wanted to thank the Stockmen and the Stock women for their generosity to the town of Livermore and also for their flexibility in relating to the needs of our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave David, Andrew Barker, Josh Cowman, Kelsey Tressimer.
Thank you, honorable, honorable mayor, city council, and city staff. My name is Dave David. I'm a 31-year resident here of Livermore and also president of the Fertile Groundworks nonprofit garden behind Asbury United Methodist Church that grows vegetables for Open Hard Kitchen. Here to throw my support into the Unified Plan and the Stockman's proposal is the best balance between all the competing interests, but my comment really centers on parking. I also have built and developed a commercial office building in, near downtown Pleasanton over the last 12 to 14 years, and can't tell you the number of people, both business owners and residents of Pleasanton, that say they come to Livermore for entertainment and dining and movies rather than their own city because it's easy to park and get to our restaurants and businesses. So I endorse the Unified Plan because of its balance for parking, because it does draw dollars and visitors to our community, and wholly endorse those compromise plans. Thank you.
Mr. David, thank you. Andrew Barker, Josh Cowman, Kelsey Tressimer, Lee Ellison.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Barker. I've enjoyed being part of this process and really appreciated the work that Mr. Early and the rest of you have done. I did want to point out one mistake that Mr. Early made in his presentation. He referred to a loan that the city made to the city. In fact, there is no loan in the financial records involving this. The land in question is actually owned by the Affordable Housing Fund. And if you look at your financial reports, that's very clear. The land itself is listed as an asset of the Affordable Housing Fund. And our municipal code and state law require that we use affordable housing funds for affordable housing. That seems very reasonable. What you can't do is use affordable housing to buy land, wait around a few years, and then say, oh, forget it, we're gonna use that for something else. That's not ethical, it's not appropriate, and it's not legal. Affordable housing funds should be used for affordable housing, and I encourage you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barker. Josh Cowman, Kelsey Tressimer, Lee Ellison, Ruth Gaston.
Good evening. I'd like the bulk of my statement to be my appearance at this meeting as a member of what is an underrepresented demographic in the survey. It's not often I get a chance to be part of an underrepresented demographic, so I appreciate the, I appreciate my friends for inviting me here or encouraging me to come here and just signify the engagement of the younger population of Livermore, the one whose future we are deciding with this plan. Secondly, I'd like to comment on my role in recruiting individuals for one of the larger employers in Livermore, people that tend to fall in the higher end of the income bracket but yet still find housing a major barrier to coming to this area. And in my experience in this role, I've seen it as having the potential to really instigate a brain drain on our area, and I would like to see housing as a, much more of a priority than the survey, at least with its demographic breakdown, may have indicated it. Thirdly, I would also like to say that I'd never been exposed to the Unified Vision Plan before tonight, but after listening to it and hearing the compromises and effort of many people that it represents, it's something that is very intriguing to me. The one exhortation I'd like to include with that relates back to my second point, and that I think that housing should still be prioritized over parking because the availability of that for the people that will constitute the future of this town is dependent on building housing rather than favoring parking, which may have more weight with the current demographic rather than looking toward its future. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelsey Tressimer, Lee Ellison, Ruth Gaston, Patricia Monroe.
Good evening. My name is Kelsey Tressimer. I live in downtown Livermore currently. I had a choice to move anywhere in the United States, and I picked Livermore for a reason. I've lived in small towns nearly my whole life, and you guys have something awesome going on here. And I am so excited not only to see what you guys have planned, but the involvement of the community members and the turnout that you've got at every one of these meetings. It's pretty unique. Every time I see the presentation, I'm always astounded with the research that you guys and the effort that has been put into it, all of the background checks, all the outreach. It's pretty phenomenal, and as a resident here, it makes me proud that you guys are working so hard for us. Thank you. I'm on my second career now, and my priorities in this town are pretty simple when it breaks down to it. I care about affordable housing so all income levels can put down roots in this amazing town, enriching, enriching it with their own stories as they grow. We talked about teachers and firefighters and policemen. If those people don't have a place to live, we lose out on those stories. We lose out on their involvement, and it's incredibly important that we have a diverse and vibrant town. I encourage you to make development choices that not only enhance this town, but are rooted in fiscal viability and responsibility. You have a lot of choices ahead of you, and you're gonna have to work through the pros and cons, but I encourage you to plan for the future and build for the future. Make the choices that are financially sound. Lastly, listen to the experts. I love so many of the results that, or products of this research, including the creative and bold efforts of the Unified Concept. You all have a challenge in front of you. I, I want to encourage you to build a Livermore for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee Ellison, Ruth Gaston, Patricia Monroe, oh, Ruth Gaston left, I'm sorry. Patricia Monroe and Von Draghi. Ms. Ellison.
Great. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and first off, I'd like to thank the council for soliciting feedback from such a wide sample of the city's population, and I'd also like to express my enthusiasm for continued improvements to the downtown. The down, vibrant downtown area, especially its variety of non-chain restaurants, was really a prominent factor in my own decision to accept a job here two years ago. I now enjoy living within walking distance of downtown, and I hope to continue to do so in many years to come. Overall, I've been really encouraged by the detailed analyses that have been presented at the public forums, and I found them educational to my own impressions of what should happen downtown. I'm thrilled about the idea of a boutique hotel, and I think that will be really beneficial to a lot of aspects of our city. I was also surprised to learn about how difficult it can be to activate open spaces, and correspondingly lowered my own prioritization of this feature when I submitted my survey. So today, after hearing the results of the public surveys, I had a few concerns with the general outcomes, specifically the high prioritization of parking and the low prioritization of housing. Based on the public forums, I learned that even on peak days, there remain sufficient numbers of unoccupied parking spots, which suggests to me that we don't have some severe parking problem that needs to be addressed. And from my personal experience, living in highly desirable places like Boulder, Colorado, I'm aware that vibrant downtowns can flourish even when parking is a small step away from being banned outright altogether. In terms of housing, I for one would be really interested in purchasing an affordable housing unit downtown. My household has two professional incomes, and frankly, we can't justify the cost of an entry-level house in the city, especially in light of some of the fiscal implications of if this money were to have to be paid back to some affordable housing fund. I think that affordable housing has an important role alongside other features of the downtown, including hotel, retail space, and open green spaces as the market analyses would allow. So in summary, I hope that the public feedback, as valuable as it has been, is carefully balanced with the expert opinions so that we can really have a growing and sustainable downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ellison. Patricia Monroe, Von Draghi, Carl Winty.
Good evening. I'm Patricia Monroe, and I wanted to thank the city, the city, city council, placeworks, and all the city staff for the work they've put into this project. It has truly been impressive to watch. The level of participation is, is wonderful. I spent some time writing something down to speak in favor of the Unified Concept, and then all the previous speakers took all my talking points. So I'm left with not very much to say except ditto. However, there is one more thing that has not been spoken about with regard to parking, going back to, to the, to the, to the plan, and that is, what happens if there's a change in the way cars are used? And this is beginning to occur. So as we're looking at parking, one other thing that has not been mentioned is the rise of Lyft and the, and the rise of Uber. So I'd like that to be taken into account. That's all. Basically, ditto. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Von Draghi, Carl Winty, Tom Jefferson, Jacob Anderson.
I apologize for my poor writing. It should be two zeros at the end of my name, so it's Dragu. Excuse me.
Oh, Dragu, I'm sorry.
My fault, not yours. So Mayor Marchand and city council, I'm here tonight to provide my support for the Livermore Science and Society Center and how its vision can be physically realized in the Science Learning Center in downtown Livermore. I especially support the integration of the Science Learning Center as part of the proposed Unified Concept that includes a park plaza dedicated to the Stockman Ranch and heritage of Livermore. I'm a 33-year resident of Livermore, where my wife and I have enjoyed challenging and productive careers in the Livermore School District and at Lawrence Livermore National Lab. We are active in the civic and social activities of our hometown. We know Livermore pretty well. I know this about Livermore. Downtown Livermore has changed dramatically from what it was 33 years ago. It is now a thriving commercial and cultural center of the Tri-Valley. I know this about Livermore. Much of its economic and cultural vitality has its roots in the agricultural and scientific heritage provided by the livestock industry, viticulture and genealogy, and the national labs. Livermore is known for its wines. An Element 116 is named Livermoreum, after the city of its synthesis and discovery. There it is. I've been an active and, active and passive participant in the envisioning of downtown Livermore as is played out in this, in the public planning workshops and in all the letters in the, in the letter section of the Independent. I, I, I only now, with the Unified Concept and the Science Learning Center, I can now endorse a plan that captures the character of Livermore. The Livermore Science and Society Center, as envisioned on its website and located in downtown Livermore, will augment the Livermore Labs Discovery Center and already valuable resource serving the educational needs of our local school districts. My daughter-in-law includes a yearly trip to the Discovery Center for her fifth-grade class from Pleasanton. As a volunteer at Chabot Science Center in Oakland, I have learned that the Livermore Science and Society Center will support other civic and commercial initiatives to stimulate educational and economic growth in the Tri-Valley. I urge the city council to use the Unified Concept as a basis to truly make downtown Livermore reflect the essence of our city. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Draghi. Carl Winty, Tom Jefferson, Jacob Anderson, Donna Caban.
Mr. Mayor, council, staff, thank you all so much for what you do to drive this city forward. City staff, appreciate everything that you do. Mr. Early, good job. That wasn't easy. To my, to my fellow, to my fellow committee members, I humbly apologize for walking away a little bit early, but as I stated, was not walking away from this process and how important it is. We can talk about the reasons why I did, but fundamentally, Livermore's my home, Livermore's important, and having Livermore move forward is what's mission critical. Doug Mann, if you're here, I'd like to thank you for what you said at the beginning because last meeting, I was sad and angry that anybody had the audacity to question the love of Livermore that you five put forth. Thank you for your service, thank you for what you do, thank you for Mr. Mann for bringing that up. Mr. Carling, thank you for acknowledging subjectivity. We know it. We're gonna have different opinions. May discourse happen. May different opinions happen. May the fringes not drive the outcome, but rather the centrists in that bell curve so we can move forward with progress and not stagnate. Mr. Triska, thank you for saying, keep it civil. Throughout this process, I spent a lot of time thinking about what is good government? How does government function? How many times I've read Plato's Republic? How do we have an effective government? How much should we celebrate our founding fathers for setting up a three-stool system with checks and balances of an executive, a legislative, and a judicial system? So it processes. Good government to me is a process. We don't want to stagnate, we want, we want to move forward. You all, great duty comes with responsibility, and again, I'm thankful for what you all do. You know, I can't speak for my generation, but I have spoken to a lot of people after the committee, all the way through, really diving in for how do we make Livermore the best it could be? My generation, we do care about civic finances, even if it didn't show up there. We very much do. We care about the economics and the economics that function for the vibrancy of businesses. Rachel, I support everything that you said very much. We care about opening, open space. We care about culture. We care about gathering. My friends, a lot of them can't be here because they're with their kids right now. They want a place where they can bring their kids and hang out. Stockman's Association and what that plaza looks like, it's a great thing. My first job in life was keeping a fire hot, back when you used to keep the brands hot with an oak fire before propane came in. I grew up on horseback. My family's been ranching cattle around here. It makes great sense. We should celebrate that, bring in the open space, bring in. My generation, again, I can't speak for them, but if I would, they would say, we like thoughtful housing, we like affordable housing, we like housing in the downtown community, we like science, we like food, we like drinking, we like music, we like, we, we like a hotel, we like the rodeos. We support Livermore, we support process. Good government is process. We support many facets of the Unified Plan. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you, Mr. Winty. Tom Jefferson, Jacob Anderson, Donna Caban, Tamara Royce.
Good evening. This certainly has been a long process, and I've been following it, a long process. Last week's Independent talked about a new proposal that you've heard about tonight. I had never heard about it before, the Unified Concept, and they also, the article also mentioned the upgraded plan for the community group, of the community group. It was interesting that the Unified Concept purposely did not pick a site for the hotel. But the Independent article, the article in the Independent had a paragraph that said, additional work, workforce housing would be built on the corner, not chosen for hotel and open space. It took me a while, and I thought, well, what corner could that be? Well, it's not where Blacksmith Square is. Then there are only two other corners. One is next to the Bankhead, and one is at Railroad Avenue and L Street. And no one, no one has ever suggested having a hotel in that corner. So really, what this plan, the concept, the Unified Concept is saying, they want the East Side Hotel with its $5.5 million expense for underground parking and its wonderful view of the Bankhead brick wall. And speaking of parking, as you heard, that was the most wanted, highly preferred thing in all this, 2,000 people who've been participating, giving their opinion about the thing, parking. With housing, of course, of course, last. Now, that's 2,000 people. That's many more people that are here. Maybe there are that many people in the overflow rooms. I doubt it. Maybe there are that many people in the overflow rooms, I doubt it. Their concept, that is, the unified concept, did include a large village green, which people liked. Now, the communities' groups' plan, which was in the Independent, is much more refined. They too have proposed a large village green, which would fit perfectly with the Stockman's Association desire. They have cited the hotel, that is, the community group on the west side, which the great majority of those participating in the community outreach preferred. They have come up with a way to provide adequate or excess parking at every stage of development, not just say where things go, but how to get there. And the community group's latest refinements show that the multimillion-dollar I Street garage and land purchase is not needed. Expensive underground parking, that's that $5.5 million, is also not needed. And the proposed hotel would have, on the west side, would have sufficient parking, and the inconvenience of valet parking would not be needed there either. So the communities' group plan for building the hotel on the west side could proceed with no loss of parking without needing or waiting for an I Street garage. So please take a look at that plan. They seem to have much further along in their thinking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jefferson. Jacob Anderson, Donna Caban, Tamara Royce, Cal Wood.
Hi, my name is Jacob Anderson, and I'm a teacher here in Livermore and a resident. I love this city. I was born and raised here, I was married here, and I'll probably be buried here. Livermore was always the place that I wanted to live, the place that I want to raise a family. And I was lucky, in 2009, I bought my house when the market was really low. Unfortunately, many of my fellow teachers did not get that opportunity. Any teacher that was hired a few years after me is likely to struggle to live in the community that he or she works in. That is why I'm asking you to make workforce housing a priority. Whatever choice you make might help Livermore, but you can change the life of a teacher. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Donna Caban, Tamara Royce, Cal Wood, Ian O'Leary.
Good evening, Livermore City Council members. Donna Caban, I'm speaking tonight as a 37-year homeowner in Livermore and also as a Sierra Club Tri-Valley group leader, representing hundreds of Livermore residents. We support a west-side hotel. This option will provide the most open space and a green community gathering space. Open space was ranked number three. A west-side hotel is supported by the majority of Livermore residents, as reflected in the various outreach activities. For decades, Livermore residents have worked to protect open space, and this core element should be reflected in the downtown area. Preserving green space is what makes Livermore unique. A west-side hotel is the only option that provides a viable downtown which residents and businesses can enjoy and be proud of. This option is not more expensive and would not take longer to construct. Other issues: walkability. A centrally-located west-side hotel with an entrance on Livermore Avenue will increase opportunities for hotel guests and conference attendees to easily walk to all shops and restaurants across the entire downtown area, and especially for them to access, enjoy, and the new public open space. Affordable housing. A west-side hotel offers the greatest potential for affordable housing. Creating and preserving affordable housing in walkable, bikeable, and transit-accessible urban areas is key to preventing the displacement of lower-income and even middle-class families and preventing suburban sprawl. The residents have clearly expressed their vision for the downtown, support the wishes of the majority of Livermore residents, select a west-side hotel with expansive green space for our families, for our future. Thank you.
Thank you. Tamara Royce, Cal Wood, Ian O'Leary, Derek Eddy.
Hi, I'm mayor and city council and staff. Thank you for everything. You know, you've heard that a lot, don't want to waste a lot of time going over those well-deserved thanks. I wanted to say how, you know, thrilled I am to see so many young people here tonight. I think that that's something we haven't been able to, you know, see so far, and I think it's, their viewpoints are important. However, being over 55 myself, I do think that I matter still and that I still contribute to this community, and I still have something to say. And my daughter lives here, you know, I'm happy she's still around town, and, you know, maybe someday I'll have a grandchild who lives here too. So my point is that just because we're older, our hair is gray, whatever, doesn't mean that we no longer should have a voice in our community. I've heard a lot tonight about the unified plan, and I think it's got some interesting elements. But, you know, I'm concerned when I hear people say, "Don't worry about the hotel right now," or "You guys figure out what side it goes on." You know, it's a critical piece of the puzzle. We need to plan the whole project. So, you know, while I really like what, you know, the Stockman's Association is proposing, and I think there's a lot that we can maybe do with that, I think we need to, you know, ask some questions. So, you know, I'm concerned because what I'm seeing there is that the west-side hotel is stuck over on L Street. And we know that the consultants had said before that the hotel needs to be centered on Livermore Avenue in order to be a viable, you know, successful project for the community. So I think we have to really look at that and not just say, "This plan is great, and you can just plunk it here or plunk it there, it's all going to be fine because we've got an open space in the middle." We really need to incorporate some of those elements, but we need to put the hotel, and I was, I still am a supporter of Westside A. I think that does the most to activate the space, and I'm running out of time. But what I'm also concerned about with the unified plan is that, you know, we need data, and I haven't heard any data tonight. And Councilman Warner emphasized how important that is into making any real decisions that are going to be, you know, workable. So I hope that you look at data and don't just jump on a bandwagon here and make sure that what is built is really about putting the hotel in the right place, about not forcing us into really backing into an east-side hotel, and just to make sure that we come up with something that, you know, and listen to the community group so we can hear what their other options that were mentioned earlier are. And thank you for the time.
Thank you. Cal Wood, Ian O'Leary, Derek Eddy, Tom O'Neill.
I'm Cal Wood, a 53-year resident of Livermore. I want to thank the City Council and staff for all the work that they've been doing. I haven't heard anybody talk about Interfaith Housing yet. I'm on the Board of Directors. Interfaith Housing is a group of eight religious communities that got together to build affordable housing for seniors. We now have three developments in town. We're going to hear a little more detail on that from the president of the Board of Directors, who is here and who will speak later. We have one of the developments, Vineyard Village, right across the street from the two-acre parcel at the end of the 33 acres, down by the skate park, just east of here. Vineyard Village has been here for quite a while, and it's, all three of our developments are doing very well. On the other end of the two-acre parcel is Arbor Vista over on Livermore Avenue, next to the library. So we have had experience with this, we've talked with developers, and I believe that Interfaith Housing is the right group to take over and do the low-cost housing for seniors. Shedding my board membership hat, because I do not speak for the board in what I'm going to say next, I favor a west-side hotel to go with a two-acre park, the one that the Stockman's Association is touting. I believe they've got a wonderful idea, honoring veterans, and the very real meat of what may Livermore great from the very beginning, and that was agriculture. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wood, and hi to Dixie. Ian O'Leary, Derek Eddy, Tom O'Neill, Rich Buckley.
Good evening. I'm Ian O'Leary. I'm a board member of the Livermore Valley Wine Growers Association, and I own Spirited Packaging. I'm number 36. Whoever's number 80, good luck. Good luck. Thank you, I'll be brief. A lot of ditto for everything's been said prior. I am here in support of the unified vision. I'm in here in support of your vision of a vibrant and diverse downtown that many generations want to enjoy and be proud of in this city. I'm particularly interested in the fact and the time that you've spent in the heritage of the region, the economic drivers of the region, and the community itself. And I believe and I find that the unified vision is a balanced vision. It's not a plan, it's a concept and a vision that is worth a very deep dive into one of the best aspects of everything that's been talked about here tonight from these very passionate stakeholders. You have the opportunity now to step forward and peel the onion and boil it down into something that we all are going to be proud of, but get this decision process moving. I'm a big proponent of an iconic hotel. I travel the state to every wine region here in this state of California, and I can tell you that every beautiful community that has a lot of visitors and is a driver of it has an iconic hotel. Westside is my preference, but quite frankly, and I think it was said earlier, east or west, do what's best. And I trust that you guys, you people, are going to put together the process in detail and data to boil this down into a timely decision and break ground. I also assume that this is going to be, and nobody's really talked about this, you're going to have a concept and a vision that's going to turn into a plan, but I hope it's also going to be phased, and I hope the hotel is at the top of that priority list. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Derek Eddy, Tom O'Neill, Rich Buckley.
Thank you. Derek Eddy, Purple Orchid Resort and Spa. I echo a lot of what we just said. I really want to talk about tourism, because I think, you know, we want these high-end steak houses, we want these nice, high-end retailers that aren't shopping on Google and these things. We have to have the hotel that supports it. You know, we have all the elements here. We are so wonderfully blessed, and I think, I've been here six years, and I'm excited every day to get up and be part of this awesome community with partners like Wintay and the wineries and Kuta Ridge and, you know, Darcy Kent, and we're the breweries. We have an awesome downtown that has so much to offer. But we're lacking on the Boutique Hotel. We lose a lot of business because people come here, they stay, they have all the amenities that Napa has, but they don't want to stay at a Doubletree. And no offense to Doubletrees, it's just not their business model to do that. So I am so on board. I think it's very, very important, the location of the hotel, how it fits into the wine tourism, the downtown tourism, getting people here. It's got to be the centerpiece of the downtown, and that centerpiece is going to draw, you know, your high-end retailers, your steak houses, the things, all the elements that we want to add to our already existing community. So I have a little plaque on my wall that we're the third owners of the Purple Orchid, and it's by the county commissioner, said the missing link to Livermore Valley is Boutique Hotel, and that was 20 years ago. So it's strange how 20 years today, we're still talking about the missing link, so that's what I gotta say.
Thank you. Tom O'Neill, Rich Buckley, Lanning Thomason, Gene King.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I heard about 15 or maybe 20 speakers tonight who said this was a wonderful process of finding out what the community wants, and we had 2,000 participants, and they put housing in the downtown area as the lowest priority. Yet the same 15, 20 speakers said, "Housing for me is the main priority." I really think, you know, there's a little bit of confusion here in their minds. If the process was successful, the 2,000 people did not give housing in the downtown area the main priority, but the last priority. If they're really going to be forthright about it, they have to say, "Housing is the main priority," and the process failed. This whole process that they praised got the wrong answer. I think it's important to look at that discrepancy. There's something cognitively incorrect in those 15, 20 presentations tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Rich Buckley, Lanning Thompson, Gene King. Rich Buckley.
I think he went home.
Okay. Lanning Thompson, Gene King, David Rounds.
Good evening. I'm Lanning Thompson, and I'm president of Interfaith Housing, a coalition of religious congregations that has been providing affordable apartments for low-income seniors for almost 50 years. Our three Livermore communities, Hillcrest Gardens, Vineyard Village, right over there, and Arbor Vista, have a total of 207 rent-subsidized one-bedroom apartments. Right now, we have about 1,500 applications for those 207 apartments, and seniors must wait about four and a half years to get one, if they're still alive. Those waiting lists and the waiting period are constantly growing as baby boomers age. Some 55 years ago, shortly before Interfaith Housing Incorporated, the Livermore Stockman's Rodeo Association deeded 33 acres, including the ground beneath us, to the city of Livermore to build our handsome civic center and other public facilities. That agreement involved relocating the previous rodeo grounds, but also specified a large, centrally-located park and recreational facility, and a permanent memorial to local veterans. Sadly, the park and the memorial got lost in the shuffle. So when city staff approached the stockman about using the remaining couple of acres at the end of the street to provide land for Interfaith Housing to build more senior apartments, for instance, the stockman pointed out that they never got their promised park or memorial. However, they are willing, as we have heard, to swap their mandate on the use of that parcel if they are allocated a park downtown with an expanse of grass that people can actively enjoy. If a downtown concept with a large park, such as the unified vision, were adopted, the stockman would then enable the city to give Interfaith Housing that land, and some of the affordable housing funds used to acquire space downtown could be put toward building as many as 100 badly-needed apartments for seniors and veterans on Pacific Avenue. Interfaith Housing board members have been circulating an informal petition requesting the council to provide this central park and memorial for the stockman so we can build more affordable senior apartments. In the last 12 days, we collected more than 375 signatures from Livermore residents without paying anybody or even sitting outside the Safeway, and my husband gathered some more at the American Legion meeting tonight. my husband gathered some more at the American Legion meeting tonight. So, whatever downtown concept the council ultimately approves, we are asking you to include a grassy park for the stockman. Thank you.
Thank you. Jean King, David Rounds, Linda Randall.
Okay, I just want to say that I was one, Jean King, I was one of those people that didn't get here in time, and I was out in the annex, and it's very cold out in the annex, and about half the people went home before it got time. So, if you call names, they've gone home because it got cold, it was too bad that that had to happen. Okay, you've heard a lot of people endorse the United, the Unified Plan, but we haven't really heard very many specifics about it. I would like to tell you that the community group has come up with a variation on their previous plan, and Jeff Caskey is going to tell you more of the specifics about it, but I got to come up first. And so, anyway, one of the things about our new plan is, we've taken our other one, and we've changed it a little bit, because we did listen to what the people were saying at the outreach programs. And so, some of the highlights of that plan is, I want to also say, I highly endorse what Councilmember Warner said, "We have to look at the elements, and we have to look about whether it's financially feasible." And this new plan does look at the elements, it looks at the hotel, it looks at the open space, it looks at the retail, and it looks at the housing. And it also looks at the financial ability and the feasibility of it. And so, the, and one of the other things that people are concerned about is how fast it can move forward. Our new plan can move forward faster than the East Side Hotel as it is presently planned, because it looks at the parking, and it looks at what parking can be available now, and it also says, gee, that I Street Garage is very expensive, let's not do the I Street Garage. You're spending a lot of money for the property that's there, we should build the garages on the city-owned property. And let's have a garage next to the Bankhead, because a lot of people at the outreach program said they wanted more parking on that side, next to the Bankhead, next to the movie theater, but not over on the I Street area there. They also wanted parking in the southwest corner, and our new plan has parking there in the southwest corner of the Livermore, of the west side, because that will provide parking for the people on First Street on the west side. It also has a large open space, so we very much appreciate the agreement with the stockmen, so that we can have some of the open space be there, and the housing moved out to the Pacific Avenue. I think a two- or three-acre open space would be good, and we can activate that, we can make it be populated for all the activities that the stockman would like by having the hotel there on the west side. I'm almost through. It can move faster than any other plan, it is cheaper by about six million dollars than the other plans that are going forward, it has housing, it has open space, it has retail, and it's wonderful. So, what I'm asking is for the council to ask the city staff to investigate our plan. We did hire parking consultants, we did hire people to do it, but I know you're not going to necessarily believe our plan is good. I would like you to ask the city staff to verify that this plan will work the way we're saying. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. King. David Rounds, Linda Randall, Elizabeth Judge, Richard Ryan.
Ditto on all the nice things about the council, and the mayor, and the staff, and the members of the steering committee, it's been quite a process. We've come a long way since this time last year, when the top-down process and the Lennar proposal for downtown created a referendum on the city council that resulted in the replacement of two incumbents who were up for reelection. The citizens wanted input, and a way to share that input, and this year, the new council responded by appointing a steering committee to develop an outreach plan. Public outreach is hard, it's a little messy, and it's ripe for manipulation, but the results can be very useful, and sometimes in unexpected ways. So far, it is very clear that what the public wants is not what was proposed with Lennar last year. The steering committee, West Side A construct, clearly lines up well with the public's desire for a West Side Hotel and conference center, activating a large open space, plenty of parking to replace existing parking that will be lost, and additional parking access for the public and the handicap near the Bankhead, and of course, housing. Because the city took the necessary time to gather input, we are, we all now can benefit from some new and unique ideas that heretofore were not part of the original discussion. First at the table was the community group proposal that ultimately was synthesized into the elements that comprise the West Side A plan. Then, the Stockman's Rodeo Association surprised everyone with an offer that has the potential to reduce the amount of housing required in the downtown portion of the development in exchange for a named park. And more recently, a group consisting of representatives of the wine growers, the scientific and performing arts communities, have approached the council with a new proposal that is called the Unified Concept. This Unified Concept does have the flaw of assuming that you can only build a West Side Hotel fronting on L Street, and if you do so, the housing then has to go next to the Bankhead, which is something that would never happen. Nevertheless, they do recognize the need for a large open space. All of this input is welcome, and much of it might not have surfaced if not for the process the new council put into place, and the council is to be commended for showing leadership here. The fundamentals have not changed, though, and if anything, this new input supports the public's desired outcome. The Stockman's Rodeo Association proposal will help mollify those who object to housing downtown by swapping two acres of potential downtown housing with open space. The Unified Concept also calls for a large open space and cultural amenities, while stating categorically that they are neutral on the location of a hotel. Finally, new analysis by the community group now shows that a West Side Hotel location is more affordable. It is satisfying to see the diverse input start to solidify into a vision that endorses significant open space as a necessity for the iconic downtown that we all want. Many of us believe that building a hotel on the west side along Long Road.
Thank you, Mr. Rounds. Finish up your thoughts, please. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Linda Randall, Elizabeth Judge, Richard Ryan.
I would say good evening, but that's almost good night for me.
So late, it's early.
That's for you. Okay, my name's Linda Randall, and I've been a resident in Livermore for over fifteen years, and I do look forward to the Livermore defining the downtown space for a large open area with a spectacular West Side Hotel. The West Side will allow for this. It would be nice to sit in a true green space to enjoy the, I'm sorry, enjoy my restaurant meals. All other towns have an outdoor seating area. This would be the best option considering the traffic and other issues. I also would like to make a couple of ditto's on the affordable housing, and especially for seniors, for I'm a senior myself, and housing is terrible. And I would like to ask you to please consider community group planning, and I am seriously for the West Side Hotel. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Randall. Elizabeth Judge, Richard Ryan, Shailen Zudi, Michael Frederick.
Well, good evening, everybody, or good night, or good morning, almost. I'm much better with a printed, printout, but I've been so stunned by what happened this evening that I've kind of off the balance, but I'm going to do the best I can. The city has spent about five hundred thousand on this outreach process, and it has some definite conclusions which I think should be respected. We all heard a detailed report this evening. I'm frankly surprised that a lot of the younger people are so interested in cheap housing didn't overload the online process for the outreach that would indicate that they wanted housing, and therefore, the data would come back predominantly for housing. But that's not what happened, and why they didn't do that is a mystery to all of us, I think. Older folks, that is, one of me, I mean, I'm one of them, are property owners, and we are the ones on the hook to pay for any subsidy needed, so we're very, we have a real interest in appearing at these meetings. The stockman swap of a park for affordable housing is really admirable, I don't know anybody who is against it, I think that's a great idea, and I really hope that can be a reality. The green space, as indicated in the placemarks report, that would extend from Bankhead all the way to L Street, could be called a Stockman's Park, making it even larger than the one indicated in another plan outlined this evening. Now, I also wanted to bring up that if it is indicated that the I Street Garage is not necessary, I believe the city owns about half of the land that Garage, I could be wrong, but I think the city owns about half the land that Garage would have occupied, and I'm suggesting perhaps that we could put affordable housing there, in place of where the Garage might have gone, but that's probably a thought to be brought up down the road. We have experienced a process since April. I've only been at it since the twenty-fifth of May, and I'm really tired of it, so I can't imagine how all of you feel. But I am really dismayed that of the six groups included in this Unified Plan, of the six, four of them were well-represented on the steering committee beginning in April. A couple of months ago, we all heard about the Stockman idea, and that seemed to be a good one, and yet, this group has waited until this last Monday to come up with this plan and bring a lot of people here to support it, and it really seems disrespectful to the plan that we paid for, in my time of, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Judge. Richard Ryan, Shailen Zudi, Michael Frederick.
Good evening. I'm in general agreement with what I've heard from the majority, as presented in the early presentation by David Early. The West Side Hotel seems best, and I say hooray for the Stockman's Association for making a lot of that possible. I'd like to draw your attention to another wine-growing region to the north of us, up at Sonoma. Think of what that place looks like, it has a central plaza surrounded by businesses, and it is gorgeous. The park is not bisected by roads, it's pedestrian-friendly, and I think that should be a model for what we do in this city. I'd also like to address the issue of housing, you know, we haven't been discussing at all the Groth Brothers lot that is imminent for development, we haven't discussed the area to the west of Maple Street, we haven't discussed the area on East First Street where the used car, where the new car lots are now vacant and ready for development, and housing could go in those places very nicely. The other issue I'd like to bring up is parking, I mean, that obviously is something that we need now, I don't know what we're going to need twenty years from now. With autonomous cars and Uber and so forth, I can well imagine that twenty years from now, only ten percent of us are going to have cars. So, I think while we may want to build parking now, one should be thinking about what that space could be used for in the future. So, good luck with what you do, and I look forward to further developments. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Ryan. Shailen Zudi, Michael Frederick, Lynn Sepala, Jan Bravant.
Good evening, Mayor Marshand, Livermore City Council and city staff, my name is Shailen, and I'm representing the local chapter of the Sierra Club, and we are in support of the West Side Hotel. We would like to see the following features included in the alternatives that will be studied. First is public open space, the maximum amount of open space possible with opportunities for both active recreation and passive enjoyment of the park-like setting. This, of course, is the third ranked on the prioritization sheet. Second is walkability. A centrally-located West Side Hotel with entrance on Livermore Avenue will increase opportunities for the hotel guests and conference attendees to easily walk to all the shops and restaurants across the entire downtown area, and especially for them to access and enjoy the new public open space. Third is affordable housing. Creating and preserving affordable housing in walkable, bikeable, transit-accessible urban areas is key to preventing displacement of lower-income and middle-income housing family and subsequent suburban sprawl. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Frederick, Lynn Sepala, Jan Bravant, William Dunlop.
Hi, I support the Stockman proposal, it seems to have a lot of potential. I also support a West Side Hotel, but not along L as proposed by the Unified Plan. We've been told that visibility is all-important, and L sure doesn't have visibility. I think the Unified Plan has merits, but without putting a stake in the ground as to the hotel, it's really lacking. Also, I think it uses way too much space for cut-through roads. We need a good parking component, I guess some of the people here feel that their self-driving cars are just going to circle the block until they're ready to go home, but for the next twenty years, we probably do need some parking. I'm wondering if some other people have, that have been lecturing us about Livermore's responsibility for housing, have been to Livermore before tonight, I guess they missed the hundreds of units along First Street that have gone up over the past few years. There's a new proposal just north of that for a townhouse proposal, is my understanding, and I think there's been a proposal made for housing right across the street from the proposed site, across the street from L. Housing at the proposed site's going to be the most expensive in Livermore, even if there's a component for low-income, it's going to be very small. Packing the site with housing is just not going to have any effect on the area's housing problem. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Frederick. Lynn Sepala, Jan Bravant, William Dunlop, Sally Dunlop.
Good evening, mayor, councilmen, staff, and citizens. My name is Lynn Sepal, I was a member of the, nineteen-member of the downtown steering committee. The outreach plan is complete now, showing that a clear majority wants a West Side Hotel, large open space, and limited housing. The community plan has gone through dozens of iterations, every time improving it. I'm sure the Stockman's proposal would make this plan even better. So, I see the Unified Plan as a solution and serves a problem. I think that we should make sure that the entire plan is done, not in a peaceful manner. I certainly don't want to see a hotel moving very quickly and then worry about what Phase B and Phase C will be, I think we should all be done at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you. Jan Bravant, William Dunlop, Sally Dunlop.
Just swallowed my cough drop. Excuse me, I'm going to make this short, because I don't have much voice. I would like to see the hotel on the west side, and I think that will open up more parking over by the Bankhead, I think that would be a really good place for additional parking. Also have additional parking on the southwest side of the Lucky site. I think the Stockman's proposal is marvelous, I think we couldn't have asked for something to help us get out of the mess of we have, kind of trying to get everything in there we want. As far as Blacksmith Square, I would hate to see a three-story building plopped in alongside or behind Blacksmith Square, we can have some open space, or have some large mature trees and shrubs to kind of use as a buffer, so that we could still keep it looking like it's, should be looking, and not have some, you know, big three-story building next to it. Anyway, that's all, thank you.
Thank you. William Dunlop, Sally Dunlop, Mary Ann Rocha.
Mary Ann went home.
Okay, thank you.
Bill Dunlop, pleasure to be here. I was really pleased to hear our first speakers this evening on the importance of science, and I think the Science Center in downtown and I think the Science Center in downtown would be a great idea. It's something that we actually have included in the, in our plan for a good downtown center. I also appreciate the participation of all the citizens in the, in the work that went on over the, over the summer and into the fall. And especially, I'd like to applaud the Stockman's Organization for providing an interesting option for the development of downtown. I think that's excellent on their behalf. As many of you know, I've been a strong advocate of a West Side Hotel. It's driven by the fact that in my 40-plus years at the lab, I've been on travel about 10 years. So I've spent a lot of time staying in hotels and opening the window and looking at a wall. And so that's what I think about, is, that was not what I liked. Then I a few times stayed in hotels where you opened the windows and it was a beautiful view, and you wanted to go out and take a walk, and it was fantastic. So I would, again, propose that we have a West Side Hotel, and one that we can be proud of, and that would actually be very welcoming. As a community, we need to look very carefully at the costs and phasing of the downtown project. We need to work toward a plan that's affordable, looks great in our downtown, and provides adequate parking and the other things that seem to be required and everyone's asking for. And I think the result will be a splendid, organized place where we can have outside activities, hotel activities that other people proposing about the Science Center, and all of that can be part of what we do, but we have to look at the planning and the funding of that, and I think we can come up with something that is very exceptional for Livermore. Thank you.
Thank you. Sally Dunlop, Stephanie Fish and Rakesh Patel.
Those poor people, they keep stepping over them all night long. I love steak. And I love the Stockman's Association, and they can call their park the prime rib park for all I care. I think that it, that their proposal is a good one, and I think it should be seriously looked into and financially feasible. I, I am glad to see all these young people here, despite the fact that I'm only a few years older than them. But that doesn't really work out math-wise, because I have 38-year-old daughters who lives up above our garage. And when she was going to school in Oakland on 14th Street, downtown Oakland, she lived in a very, very small apartment, and this building was so old that I'm sure you young people won't understand this, but it was built with ice boxes in the kitchen, where they put the ice in there instead of a refrigerator. So now it's just a cupboard. So it was really an old building, and we paid $700 for her to stay in that for, for a month. That was a month's rent. And now, it's not just Livermore, it is $1,700 that she would have to pay. And it is like a studio. It has a bathroom, a place for a bed, and a little, a little kitchen with an ice box. So I understand their, their problem. And my daughter is in a, getting an advanced degree, and she will want to move out, I hope. I hope she's not watching this on TV. She will want to move out, because she does want to have her own career, and I hope that she will be happy with what she will be doing. But I also, also want to comment that there, there is a lot of dense housing still being built, and I know that the downtown may be more suitable, but I do know, from being on the Commission for the Arts, that, that, for the city, that, oh, that there is a big housing unit, big development going on on Las Bacitas Avenue, north of the Safeway Store. And I don't know how many units that is, but that's a lot. And there's a lot being built out by Isabel Interchange, so it's not totally lost.
Thank you, Ms. Dunlop. Stephanie Fish, Rakesh Patel, Joan Green.
Good evening. I'm the manager for Swirl on the Square, and it's been lovely to hear so much consideration of Blacksmith Square. We've felt a little bit like an orphan over the years from the downtown in some ways. And I have a letter that represents the business owners, managers and employees from Blacksmith Square. Livermore Avenue from Railroad to First Street has been an important piece of the downtown vitality focus through the downtown-specific plan for many years. Renovation and reuse of Blacksmith Square into a vibrant cultural and hospitality experience has created a beloved destination for the Livermore community. The Blacksmith Square business community has waited patiently for the city's promised next phase connecting Blacksmith Square to First Street, through additional retail along Livermore Avenue and up to the building housing Uncle U's at the Vineyard. The Blacksmith Square business community asks that you continue your commitment to a plan that enables this connection and supports us as a destination that continues to sustain itself. The businesses at Blacksmith Square have worked tirelessly over the last eight years to create a unique collaborative environment where we all can be successful. We are proud of our hard work, and we believe we offer something truly unique to the Livermore community. It is very important to the Blacksmith Square community that any future development alongside and behind us not overshadow or diminish our presence. We are concerned that this would continue to exacerbate, exacerbate the current feeling of separation from the rest of the downtown district, rather than connect us as promised. Blacksmith Square has an important place in Livermore downtown's history, reflecting the story of entrepreneurial evolution, and we are a proud continuation of that legacy. The business owners, managers and employees of Blacksmith Square are people that have invested their livelihood, products, services and talents into downtown Livermore. The majority of us are Livermore residents. Many are longtime residents who have raised our families in this community. We are not just businesses, we are people who live as well as work here. We thank you for your careful consideration and urge you to be mindful of the impacts on our livelihoods that these decisions will make. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fish. Rakesh Patel, Joan Green, Yvonne Hopkins.
Good evening, Mayor. Excuse me, I lost my voice the other day. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Thank you. I want to reiterate everyone, everything everyone said about your effort. Obviously, I'm not a resident of Livermore, but as you know, I've been here, to this podium many times, to talk about the project. Just have a few things to say, a couple data points, and then something my dad told me the other day, which I think is important. You know, as you continue to think about the location of the hotel, we remain indifferent, I think, to where the, where the hotel sits, east or west. I think I picked the location that's best. But if I was to go through the thought process, this is what I would, what I would say. On the east side, I think the location is obvious. There's one location on the east side, which is where it's been proposed. On the west side, I think it's important that I spent many hours now listening to all the folks talk about their specific stressors and what their thoughts are. And I think the thought process on the west side now, for us, is fairly clear. If you take into consideration every element of every concern of the west-side location, obviously you have Blacksmith Square that doesn't want to be overshadowed, which I think is extremely important for the maintenance of the integrity of Blacksmith Square on that corner. You have the Stockman's Park, which I think is great, a fantastic addition to the idea and the concept of a downtown plan. And I think you have, obviously, the First Street businesses, which don't want their, their backyard, so to say, being impinged on by a hotel. You know, with those considerations, you know, I think the obvious location is on the corner of L and Railroad, along, along L and perhaps on the corner of L and Railroad. We think a hotel that sits on Railroad solely would overshadow Blacksmith Square, and perhaps diminish the overall presence of downtown. Sort of with that said, I hope that helps you with your decision-making, but one of the interesting things my dad told me the other day when I was talking, my dad, my dad's 80 years old, he came to the United States when, in 1958, when he was extremely young, younger than I am right now. And I asked him, you know, what drives you every single day when you have an uncertain situation? He told me something very clear, it's the easiest thing, which is do what inspires you. That's the reason I'm still here today. This is the reason Presidio is still extremely excited about the downtown. We think Livermore is an extremely unique place, one that can put itself more on the map than it already is with a nice, beautiful hotel. And I urge you as a council, set aside the politics if you can, and do what inspires you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Joan Green, Yvonne Hopkins, Larry Dino.
Joan Green, thank you for allowing me to be able to speak. I'm just going to really ditto Jean King's comments, because I think that the community group's proposal is very excellent. I think some wonderful things have been discussed this evening with the support of the, of the Stockman, and I think any way that that can be worked into our, that block would be wonderful. I, I am concerned about the housing there, because there is so much housing that has been planned already by you wonderful people. We have so, almost every patch of earth in this area of Livermore is in, not immediately in the very center, but all the Grossman is right there, Grossman Brothers. I, I really am delighted that the Stockmans will be willing to exchange that commitment that we have for housing and for the park, and I think that'll be wonderful. I guess that's it. I'll shut up. Thank you.
Thank you. Yvonne Hopkins, Larry Dino, Dawn Argula.
Good evening, Mayor Marchand, city council members and everybody else who stayed awake for this evening. I'm Yvonne Hopkins. I have been a resident of Livermore since 1982. I've had a small business here in town since 1984. And I'm also a graduate of the International Tour Management Institute, a member of the San Francisco Tour Guide Guild, and have completed Sonoma County Tourism Ambassador certifications, as well as San Francisco Tourism Certification Program. For the past four years, I have been working as a tour guide to destinations in the San Francisco Bay Area. I've escorted guests to Napa and Sonoma, as well as numerous other attractions in San Francisco, Sausalito, Silicon Valley, and yes, Livermore Valley Wine Country. So my question tonight is, how do we want to bring tourism guests into our downtown? How do we want to plan for it? Regardless of where a hotel may be placed and the ratio of housing units to retail units, there is a consensus that parking and traffic routing is a priority. Also, with Livermore's growth over the last three to four decades, hospitality and tourism has become an increasingly important source of revenue for our restaurants, our shops and our wineries, and this trend will continue to grow. In looking at the various documents and survey responses regarding the coming changes to the downtown area, I did not see any reference to planning for infrastructure that would address accommodation of tourism groups. Dining and shopping are important parts of a successful wine country experience. Currently, our downtown is not efficiently set up for loading and unloading passengers from coaches. There is one passenger loading and unloading zone behind the Bankhead, and only within the last couple of years have we had a visitor's center that is open in the theater lobby, mostly in the afternoons. With the coming improvements for the downtown area and Livermore's continued commitment to attracting tourism to our wine country and to our downtown, now's the time to put into place plans that gracefully integrate the loading and unloading of motor coaches, welcoming tourism visitors to our beautiful city. There is a need for a traffic flow plan specifically for larger vehicles like the coaches, so that they can bring groups downtown for dining and shopping, with minimal impact to our local streets. Having a well-thought-out and implemented plan for tourism coach routing is, as well as the strategy strategically-placed loading and unloading zones, will also make it attractive to tour operators, so that they will find it more enticing to bring their tours to our city. Think about this, a small coach with 20 tourists can transport the same number of customers as 10 cars needing to find parking. A larger coach with 54 passengers removes 27 vehicles from that parking mix. Tourists are a pretty clean industry. They don't use many of the services that full-time residents may. They come to our region, purchase goods and services and return home, send their friends. So I'm requesting that you simply include planning for tourism in the infrastructure, because I didn't see that anywhere in the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Good insights. Larry Dino, Dawn Argula, Chester Moore, Stephen Mira-Sue.
My name is Larry Dino. My wife and I have lived in Livermore for 16 years. We have a boutique winery in town. Over the last five months, I've spoken at several of the city council meetings and participated in one of the planning workshops for the downtown development input process. As a Livermore winery and as a resident, we'd like to see the development of the downtown begin ASAP, and in particular, particularly, we'd like to see the groundbreaking of a luxury hotel begin as soon as possible. Every day we do not have a hotel, the wine region and the downtown businesses suffer in loss of business opportunities. Each day we delay, we continue to lose ground as a recognized wine region. My preferences would be to begin the development of the hotel on the east side as soon as possible, because this appears to be the most expedient way to break ground. Also, aesthetically, I like the conceptual diagrams with the four-story luxury hotel positioned next to the Bankhead Theater and across from Blacksmith Square. It would look stunning as you go north or south on Livermore Avenue. I also like the idea of the hotel having a small conference facility with the opportunity for businesses to use the hotel, for the businesses using the hotel, to use the Bankhead Theater for a larger auditorium-style conferences. This generate revenue opportunities for the Bankhead Theater. There would be great views from this hotel on the east side, overlooking back Blacksmith Square, the Bankhead Plaza and the hills. Also, putting the hotel on the east side actually frees up space on the west side for more open space. So I see a lot of advantages of the hotel on the east side. I'm not against having the luxury hotel on the west side if timing for breaking ground on the hotel would not be compromised. However, I do not think that having a multi-story hotel squeezed next to the Blacksmith Square would be a good idea for many reasons, as mentioned throughout the day. I do support the unified downtown vision that has been presented of having an open-space park next to Blacksmith Square, and having it as a centerpiece of the West Side catalyst site. I do agree that having some amount of downtown affordable housing would help tie the site together and provide more business for the downtown businesses. This, to me, seems to be one point that's been missing today. In order for the downtown businesses to thrive, you need to bring more people down there. We'd all like to have high-end restaurants, high-end wine bars, more retail stores, but right now it's not economically feasible to do that. So having the hotel and having some affordable housing downtown will help bring business to the local businesses. Thank you. I'm hoping the city council can make a timely decision and come up with a phased plan where we can see the groundbreaking of a hotel in the first half of 2018.
Thank you. Dawn Argula, Chester Moore, Stephen Mira-Sue.
Thank you, Dawn Argula, CEO and President of the Livermore Valley Chamber of Commerce, Mayor Marchand, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to serve on the Thank you for the opportunity to serve on the earlier Downtown Steering Committee. I was pleased to see the robust outreach program. I was a little disappointed by the low participation of the under-50 crowd, but now we know that more and earlier outreach is needed to increase participation from this demographic. Major points for this chamber to consider during your deliberations: $14.5 million in outstanding loan from the Affordable Housing Fund. Our strong recommendation is for timely repayment of the loan or timely delivery of $14.5 million of affordable housing to offset the loan. Plan for success. While the chamber has refrained from getting into details of the plan—east-side, west-side hotel, brick facades, how much green space—we support a plan that is economically feasible with timelines. The chamber is interested in a plan that identifies private investors and/or developers that will deliver any of the elements identified for this phase of revitalization—parking, hotel, housing—as well as retail and additional desired community assets such as green space and cultural art space. We seek a plan for downtown that designates the highest and best use of precious public dollars that offer opportunity for economic success for all elements that are built. City funding should be used for the standard public investment in a new development such as infrastructure or parking. Phased implementation is a realistic, efficient approach to execute a vision of this magnitude. Show us the money and tell us when projects will be delivered. I want to acknowledge the efforts of the Livermore Stockmans Association, the Livermore Valley Wine Growers Association, the Livermore Shakespeare Festival—if Lisa's still here, thanks very much—the Livermore Downtown, Inc., and David Kent and others for working together to develop a promising unified concept for the downtown. Multiple stakeholder involvement, especially by these groups, offers a strong, thoughtful, and very credible perspective. These representatives understand the risks, commitments, and strategy necessary for economic success. Thank you all. And this chamber also acknowledges and supports the efforts of this city council and the city staff in the development and execution of this planning effort. As the issues of economic feasibility and timelines mentioned earlier are addressed, we look forward to continue our support and partnership with you that supports taking this downtown district to the next level: dynamic, diverse, and thriving. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're coming up on 10 to 11. We need to address some business here because if the council's going to go—well, we should have taken this before 10:30, but if we're going to move and continue the item through 11 o'clock, we'll need to take action. City Attorney.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, your rules and procedures provide that since you're not taking up a new item after 11, you're fine to continue with this one without additional action.
Okay, do we need to take a vote?
You do not.
Okay, so we can just keep chugging on through?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Do you just want to take a break at about 11? Keep going. 11:15, okay. Okay, so Chester Moore, Steve Mirasoux, Doug Mann, Milo Nordike.
Hi, I'm Chester Moore, and as you know, I ran against some of you guys for—as a candidate for city council, and I didn't win, but I'm still advocating for that town square. And one thing that I've noticed about the discussions tonight is that we really need to understand how important that central block is. It's the image that we present to the rest of the world. So what I say may shock some people because I tried to evolve a concept for that city block, recognizing how important it was. And so I worked hard to try to come up with a complete town square concept that had all sorts of synergism, but it's a business-oriented concept rather than a housing-oriented concept. And so I should point out that I was beat up pretty fierce by the Livermore Downtown Steering Committee. My concept didn't survive the light of day in that committee. And so I—my concept was very strongly injured by this. So I hope you guys will understand as I read my letter here. I am Chester Moore, former candidate for city council. My recommendation on what to do with the Placeworks Summer Workshop Outreach Report is to move it promptly to the trash. That's the shocker, okay? Now, I understand people that want the housing, but I worry about putting it into that particular block. The reason is that I recommend the trash. The reason is that the report is the product of a highly orchestrated political process to get public endorsement of a multi-decade political agenda to replace our whole historic downtown business district with a modern, high-density housing variant that will potentially lure more young people to live near our downtown to support the restaurants and bars of our new and vibrant entertainment district. Since the sudden appointment of the politically biased Downtown Steering Committee, DSC, known to support the construction of waves of multifamily housing now advancing into the downtown business district, roughly $1 million of public money has been spent to hire a Placeworks political consulting firm to work with DSC to prepare presentation materials for the summer workshops. In the late summer, Placeworks was supported by Livermore city staff to guide and monitor the various neighborhood workshop discussions and to collect and report the data results. Following the special two-hour Placeworks monopoly game process to move the elements of a redevelopment map, the many citizens attending the workshops have now seemingly endorsed the ideas introduced in last summer's Lennar Presidio workshops. The redevelopment area should now be filled, according to them, with the three high-priority elements initially endorsed by the city council for public support: an upscale wine-country hotel, a large city-owned parking garage, and a large, high-rise multifamily housing development at X X Street. I can finish in a minute.
Everybody has the same amount of time. You can submit your written comments to the city clerk.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Mirasoux, Doug Mann, Milo Nordike, Carol Wawer. Mr. Mirasoux? Okay, thank you. Doug Mann, Milo Nordike, Carol Wawer.
Good evening again. Councilmember Warner, you made a statement right before we—it seems like a lifetime ago now, but it was only a few hours ago—that we are now past the stage of information gathering. I—I'm sure you can tell by my tone, I disagree with that statement quite strongly. I am thrilled, though, that we are learning so much tonight, new information, and that although we—I don't believe we're past the point of information gathering, I do believe we certainly have gathered a lot of information and that we're maybe at the end of the beginning or hopefully a little further than that. But, you know, the Stockmans Association—you know, we heard about this two months ago, and this is—you know, tonight is really the next—you know, I haven't heard anything else until tonight. And, you know, I echo what everybody says about our ranching heritage, and it really feels right to bring that theme to our central downtown, open space and amenities. And we're just beginning to, I think, realize ourselves how good that feels and what it should look like. And many of us who've wanted to be involved in the process and give our opinions are just really learning about that right now. More information than I'm learning tonight. The I Street Garage, thankfully, to me, may be falling out of favor. The I Street Garage is going to take two-thirds of the existing cars that now park on the open parcel and move them across Railroad Avenue and have them park over there. That is going to be bad for traffic. In fact, the other—something that we learned during the workshops is you can't even build a garage with more than 375 spaces, not because you don't have the space, but because it would be so detrimental to Railroad Avenue that it couldn't even serve it. Well, if 375 spaces is that bad, I'm not sure that adding a few less is good. I think the idea of keeping parking closer to where people now want to go—to our very successful downtown First Street—which, by the way, is not broken—you know, people are—I—I think some people seem to be suggesting that, you know, there's something that we need to fix down there. We're improving, but there's nothing broken. Downtown is successful. There's a lot more to say. The—there's a lot that we learned even during the Lennar process that we have not brought—oh, no, I'm out of time.
You can submit your written comments. We'll get them.
I'll write it down and send it to you.
All right. Thanks, Doug. Milo Nordike, Carol Wawer, and Bob Shock.
Well, I really have nothing to add to what's been said. It's all been very interesting. I think the question of what should we—where should we build the hotel, I think, is a key question, but I think the idea of one on the west side is so much better. It just leads to the development of that area much more so than if they were to put the hotel over there on the east side and have to cram all the cars around it, and it would be a much more difficult thing to do because of the much, much less space that's available over there. In general, I think the development of this is an exciting step for the city to really put their mind behind the idea of developing a whole new version of downtown Livermore with hotels and the—the, yeah, downtown, the hotels. And I think the development of using the—the process there in order to come up with the idea of science building, which I think is something that the city has lacked in a long time. I mean, it's a city which is 90% is associated with—or at least at one time was associated with the science of laboratories. And I think to build a science—how—the science building down there which has a museum and a lot of things related to the laboratories is going to be an excellent thing. So—well, I think that's—I think you've heard all the really good things about what's going to happen there in the last couple of hours.
Thank you very much. Carol Wawer, Bob Shock, Tom Manger. Carol's gone. Okay. Bob Shock? Tom, you're up.
Hello, my name is Tom Manger. I am the newly-installed president at Robot Garden Makerspace in downtown Livermore. We are right at the corner of M and Second. We support the unified plan even though they didn't draw us on the map. I think that was an oversight. Robot Garden has traditionally provided adult activities and content. We are in the process of changing course to focus on hands-on, informal STEM learning activities for youth. We're working—or we're hosted by IGATE and are very thankful for that partnership. We have a very scientifically literate city council, but council members didn't start that way. You had—we're fortunate to have great schools and a dose of inspiration. With two national labs in Livermore's backyard, a science and society center should be an important component of the downtown plan. Robot Garden endorses this plan, and we look forward to partnering with the people putting together the science center. We've discussed ways to work together already. We're talking about helping provide volunteers to build displays and signage using equipment in our makerspace. I just want to quickly mention peripherally—I'm the person spearheading the STEM Center at the airport. It's, again, going to be a center for youth informal STEM learning. And I know you're looking to build a conference center downtown as part of the downtown plan, but I want to mention that the airport has already helped with some of the larger events. Just recently, in a 4,000-square-foot hangar, Five Rivers Aviation hosted Manufacturing Day and a fundraiser for back-to-school supplies, as well as a Livermore School District Management Meeting. And I think there's another one of those coming up. And then just recently, using 12,000 square feet of hangar space, they hosted a first LEGO League robotics competition for a bunch of grade school and middle school kids. And we're looking forward to just bringing more families to downtown, so we hope you'll include the science center. Thank you.
Thank you. John Stein, Jeff Caskey, Ian Carlin.
John Stein, 1334 Cathy Court. I find myself agreeing with Doug Mann on two issues, which is unusual. The first is, I think, for somebody who's not on the council or has never been on the council, he's got it exactly right. You do work to serve the community. You put in a lot of hours. And when you finally come up with a plan, you'll lose friends, be yelled at, and vilified by people who did not get everything they wanted. I also agree that the input is not ended—I mean, with this meeting. I would urge when you get a conceptual plan, before all the renderings and all the detailed planning, you present it to the community and allow them to comment. You get the wisdom of the community with potential problems, and you get an idea of whether or not it's accepted. If it's not, it may end up like the BART plan or the Community Theater. I would urge, as you plan, you set goals and develop priorities of a timeline as well as weighting the goals, and I urge you heavily weight the ones that the summary of the outreach came up with. That is open space, parking, and smoothly flowing traffic, and little or no housing. You found two acres on the Stockman's Plan, which I think is a very good idea. I also support the idea of selling a small amount of land to the merchants on First Street for a second frontage. But I think it's important that you listen to the community. There are special interests. You've got two alternative plans coming up before you, too, and you should look at those and take the best parts of them. But again, I urge when you come up with a conceptual plan that you do present it to the community. Also, there were two points. One was that there seems to be a contradiction between three stories and the height of the bankhead, which is closer to five stories. And also, in preserving the character of the community, the structures are important, not just the brick and the wood and the stone for new buildings, but also maintaining the character by maintaining the—essentially the facades, at least, of the buildings along First Street between L and Livermore, as well as some other unique buildings on Second Street and sprinkled throughout the area. And I think you can accommodate the affordable housing somewhere off-site. I mean, the land there is too valuable for other uses. It's not the highest and best use. There's vacant land to the north, to the west, and even some to the east. And two acres would accommodate—you found another 100 units on Pacific, so two or three acres would accommodate all of the affordable housing. And if you build housing on that site, it probably will not be— And if you build housing on that site, it probably will not be affordable. The downtown plan requires only 10% of the units be affordable. If it's built anywhere else, at least 15% would have to be affordable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Jeff Caskey, Ian Carlin, Alexandra Felker.
Jeff Caskey speaking as a member of the Community Group tonight. Late, but as promised, is our study showing that a West Side Hotel and its associated open space, as represented in the West Side A Plan, can be built first when doing a downtown project. We include with our, with the study, some maps that show the staging of the parking to show that in fact parking would be available as needed throughout the process, all the way up into the end, where we end up still with a surplus of parking. We also use the finance information from the City and the Downtown Steering Committee presentations. And our study shows that the West Side Hotel can save the city over $6 million relative to an East Side Hotel. Simply put, an East Side Hotel has a parking problem and it costs about $6 million to fix it. Over $6 million, but you know, I don't want to overstate yet. What we're working on is what we've heard in, in the process and what you've heard tonight from the work that David Early and Placeworks have done. We've pulled together those things, we've listened very carefully. A vibrant open space activated by retail restaurants, Wine Country Hotel on the west side with convenient parking on the east side of Livermore Avenue and at the southwest corner of the site is a synthesis of what we've heard from the wide range of voices of outreach that the process was designed to include. Everybody from the young, the old, the techie, the Luddite, all the folks who wanted to participate in all the various different ways that, that they could come in. Tonight, we've also heard support for including flexible performance space. Some have been calling it a black box theater. The Community Group Plan has for a long time been calling it a multipurpose community, a multipurpose conference center with retractable raked seating, but I suspect that we can work out the details there. I'm glad also to hear support for science and cultural elements. All those have been shown for many months in the West Side A Plan, a plan whose elements were introduced in the Downtown Steering Committee process and were vetted in the public workshops and outreach. So I'm glad to hear the, the wide-ranging support for that. So I'd like to ask council to direct staff to study our planning and figures, to verify the ability to meet these public goals at a great schedule and better pricing. I also ask that the paperwork that we're presenting be made public. I'd love to have the public take a look at this as well. We, we try to look at the data overall. If I can cherry pick though, a little bit from Placeworks' data, I'd like to note that I was so encouraged to hear that it was actually the lower-income respondents who were disproportionately supportive of the cultural amenities. And we heard tonight the youth who are so supportive of the scientific amenities that we could have available in there. I believe that we can come together with a plan that is affordable and practical and can be, can get that hotel built right away. Let me hopper this up.
Ian Carlin, Alexandra Felker, and Drew Felker.
Thank you. So, one of the things I haven't heard anyone talk about is the environmental impact of where you place housing, how people get around, and why that might matter. The Sierra Club punted on this, worrying about where the housing should be, but not what that means. The downtown is actually the most transit-adjacent plot of land in the whole city. It's connected to ACE, which is walking distance away. It is connected to rapid bus transit to BART, which is probably more accessible to BART than what's being built on the highway, because the buses can actually use the fast lanes. And so any housing put in downtown, it will help with, and be, it's a drop in the bucket, but helps with environmental goals, global warming. It means people can walk to places. They can actually walk to downtown. They don't have to use a car to get everywhere. Helps solve your parking problem. You know, it really is a moral thing to actually put housing close to the center of town and adjacent to transit. It would also be the right thing to do, to use affordable housing money to build affordable housing where lower-income people would have access to public transit, because lower-income people actually rely more on transit than higher-income people. And so please, don't build lots of parking for rich people to come downtown. Build housing where people who need it can actually walk and save expenses, not needing another car. Be able to walk to the grocery store, restaurants, shops. All of that would be within half a mile of that housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlin. Alexandra Felker and Drew Felker.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My husband and I were recently married in Livermore. We actually got married in the middle of October.
Congratulations.
And, thank you. And we were searching for a nice hotel to stay in for our wedding night. And unfortunately, the Purple Orchid was completely full, because I believe there was already a wedding there. And we ended up staying at the Holiday Inn Express. So, we would have loved to have stayed at a boutique hotel in Livermore, so just to second what so many people have already said, I think that should be a priority. I think affordable housing is important, as so many other people have said. Housing is expensive in the Bay Area and that makes other commodities and labor more expensive as well. So I think when we're looking towards the future and towards building what we believe would be a good society, housing is something that we need to look forward, look for. I agree with the unified downtown vision. I was also thinking a lot about what the purpose of these meetings are. And I could be wrong, but I believe that the purpose of these meetings are to gather from what the community believes is important. And then the details are up to you. We, I have full confidence that you will make the best decision possible as far as whether the hotel should be on the east side or the west side. I think what's clear tonight is that the hotel is important, housing is important. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Felker. Drew Felker, Katie Marcel.
Good to see you guys again. It's nice, everyone's been a lot nicer at this meeting than usual. So, it's been a pleasure to be sitting in the crowd. I think that we should build houses downtown, because every house we build lowers the average cost of housing. It's also more environmentally friendly than building houses on the outside town. So I second what the guy over there said. And then I think that import, one other important thing is timelines. I think that we need to set a date when we're going to decide when to pull the trigger. It's obvious that people in the community want more from our downtown. There was very few people that said, "We don't want anything." I think it's obvious that we need a hotel, we have to have housing, and please just make a timeline and make it happen. I trust you guys' judgment. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie Marcel? No? Okay, what's the consensus? Taking a, you want to take a 10, five-minute break? Five minutes? Okay, five-minute break.
How many more?
Pardon me?
How many more?
Uh, we got 10 more.
Thank you.
So, five-minute break. Well, welcome back, everybody. Okay, we're in the home stretch here. Let's see, we got 32 cards left. Oh, sorry, miscounted.
Very funny.
Well, yeah, we, we look for it where we, where we can find it, you know? Okay, we have Arlen Grimm, Suzanne Alvarez, Denise Ledden, Walter Davies. Although I imagine everybody's on this side. I think, I don't think there's anybody left in the police community room. If anybody is left in the police community room, or in the multiple service center, come on over here. Okay. Okay, very good. Okay, so, Arlen Grimm, Susan, Suzanne Alvarez, Denise Ledden.
Mayor and City Council.
Little closer to the microphone.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I'm so glad to be here and I thank you, City Council, for inviting the members of the community. I've heard some wonderful ideas today. I absolutely love Livermore and I'm hoping we can consider these ideas with an open mind. One of the ones that I heard tonight was to have the hotel on L Street. It would eliminate so much of the congestion on Livermore Avenue and, and to put a parking garage, this is my suggestion, across from the hotel, either in the Gross Lot or where the Tri Valley Haven resale shop is. That entire block of retail stores on Railroad Avenue, across from the block we're redeveloping, will be torn down. That is low-cost buildings that can be used into housing, townhouses, apartments, whatever you please. But ultimately, we have to remember that we're building not just for today, but for the centuries to come. When you think about our iconic cities, Washington Mall, Boston Commons, New York Central Park, and Chicago, God bless my home city, when they found out that Lincoln Park wasn't enough, they built Grant Park. And when they had the 1933 World's Fair, they said, "Hey, we can put another park here." And they put the whole Lake Shore south and put the Planetarium, the Aquarium, the Field Museum of Natural History, Museums of Science and Industry, and the aquarium, that all went on that piece of land. And they were thinking ahead and we have to have vision for Livermore. We have to not look at where we can put a house. For God's sakes, the Pacific Avenue housing, but the rodeo, rodeo men are offering us is a godsend. It is going to be so wonderful to be able to have housing units there, next to the library, open space, beautiful, near the other senior housing. Housing does not belong in a vibrant, commercial downtown area. There is no reason to have it in Chicago. No one has even considered the thought of building a single-family residential home or even an apartment building anywhere in the loop, probably in the last 100 years. So, what I'm saying is, we don't need it. We can think about putting apartment buildings right now on Second, Third, the other side of Fourth, Fifth. There's a lot of walking distance area, just like the beautiful townhouses that are built now on First Street off toward 580. They're all within walking distance of downtown. I have a friend who works at the lab. He doesn't own a car, doesn't drive a car. He takes the bus when he teaches at Los Pecitas. He takes the 10 bus when he goes to the lab. He lives in an apartment here in Livermore and loves it. And he lives up by Lucky's on Portola there. So there's lots of great housing opportunities right now in Livermore. And you don't have to be three blocks from, or two blocks or one block from the downtown to appreciate all of Livermore. And I think that is about all I can say, except thank you so much to the rodeo, the Cattlemen's Association. They are giving us an incredible gift and we should make the most of it and have the largest possible open space and park in Livermore, because it may be the only thing that will distinguish us from every other small town that wants to have wine tasting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grimm. Suzanne Alvarez, Denise Ledden, Walter Davies.
Suzanne left.
Suzanne left, okay.
Good evening, City Council. I'm tired. I'm Denise Ledden. Livermore is a wonderful town. Other city council members in other towns tend to sell out to developers, because the developers have more knowledge and it is a lot of work for council members and staff to develop massive plans. So other councils bend to the, to the developer, but Livermore is different. We have council and citizens who care to keep Livermore wonderful. And we have put an enormous amount of work into plans to make an exciting, vibrant downtown. I support a gorgeous West Side Hotel with a very large green space that all citizens can use. This will activate the new retail that will be placed on the west side. The hotel will keep homeless from setting up camp. I look forward to future art walks and Livermore wine events in our new green space. I support the Livermore Stockman's Rodeo Association proposal. I do not support the downtown property owners acquiring downtown city property. Forgive me, it sounds like a half-baked plan. I support street-level handicap parking on the east side with an additional hand, an additional parking lot. Paul Spence said that there is no difference in speed, so an east side hotel is not necessary for expediency. The developers don't care, they just get in and get out with money they intend to make. Please seriously consider the new Community Group Plan. They have put in so, so much work on a professional plan. A West Side Hotel will go up faster and be millions of dollars cheaper. Livermore Council needs to be a visionary for this downtown project that can serve us well for years to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Walter Davies, Nancy Mulligan, Lori Sucee.
Walter left.
Pardon me, Walter left, okay.
Nancy left.
Okay, Nancy left. Lori Sucee and, oh, and another Suzanne Alvarez, so they're, okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. I'm new to Livermore and I think it's a really great town. But in my view, I think we need the West Side Hotel with a large, open park. And I support the Community Group's West Side Hotel. I don't think housing should be downtown. Downtown should be a place for the residents to come and enjoy what their town has to offer, such as shopping, dining, cultural experiences, and relaxation that parks and open space have to offer. A West Side Hotel would offer conference rooms for businesses in the area and draw newcomers to the town who might never experience the city of Livermore. They would enjoy the many existing and new retail experiences in the larger West Side space. No guarantee, but wouldn't it be great if the hotel offered a restaurant that would be open late for gathering and enjoying friends? Having open space, green space, a place that can be used by all, a place to break away from the home environment, mingle with other people, is a well-needed place for all our residents. Ideally in an incorporated park to bring the kids, or for all, just to enjoy outside space that they may not have in their own living environment. It will bring Livermore alive. It will bring more revenue for the town as people will come from all over who are here to spend time and money in our town. Imagine how many people will have the opportunity to discover Livermore and all it has to offer, and the opportunity to draw them back again to spend more time. Or to be able to share with more than our limited residents, the economic and cultural diversity that it offers. An infusion of new spenders and people discovering Livermore will benefit all of us in the long run and could lead to newcomers even moving to our town, expanding our already-existing residential area, therefore supporting more commercial ventures. This will not happen with a box, a box of a hotel stuffed into the east side site. No doubt, we need affordable housing, but I'm curious, how would one legally discriminate as to who would rent or own this housing in the downtown area? There is no guarantee it would be a teacher or a service worker in Livermore. It could be someone who works in San Francisco or surrounding cities. What happens if it is a worker and they get transferred out of town? Percentage-wise, for affordable housing downtown, walking to downtown, living in downtown, how can it be regulated who wins the lottery of an apartment? Thinking about it, affordable housing downtown, if affording accommodation for someone is tight, how much will they spend of their income actually going out to eat and drink or shop in the downtown area that they get to walk to? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay, that's all the cards that I have. We got a couple of duplicates, but I'm not going to call those names again, because they, they were duplicates and they already had a chance to speak. So with that, the public comment period for item 6.01 is now closed. I went through all the cards. Somebody missed?
No, he just wanted to speak without having the card there, but we were telling him he had to put his card in.
Oh. Wolf?
Yes, sir.
Right on, good to see you. Do you want to speak?
I, I would like to say just a few things.
Okay, I'll tell you what, go ahead and, uh...
I'll just say from right here.
Oh, go ahead, please.
You need to use the mic.
Just, just identify your, your name. Just identify your name.
I'm Wolf Hamlin, and I appreciate the opportunity to live in Livermore. I came from Bidor, Kansas. I appreciate everything that Livermore has given myself and my family and moving here and living here. And I came here tonight to see and learn and be part of this community, more so than I ever have been in the past. And I appreciate that opportunity also because not everybody has that. And there's a lot of places in the world that don't. What I will say is, I'm invested in this community. My wife and I have spent a lot of money remodeling a home that we plan to stay in for a long time to be part of this. And I hope that we can all move forward to better our downtown situation. My opinion is one thing. Everyone else's opinion, or your opinion, or someone else's opinion is a different thing. But at the end of the day, as a community, we can rise above all of that, and we can be prosperous, and we can move forward. And I appreciate that each one of us will be able to do that. So, that being said, this is a great town to live in. It's not the town I grew up in. I've been here for twelve years now. And with Livermore and the support that this community has given myself and my family and where I want to be in life and how I want to live my life and the job opportunities that I've been given, everyone here can thrive and succeed. So, as everybody says, "I'm a naysayer here and I'm a naysayer there," or "I don't like this plan, I don't like that plan, I don't like anything." At the end of the day, we're just humans, and we're all trying to make a better world for ourselves and our children and our children's children to live in. And I felt like that's kind of lost as everybody comes up with their agenda and their ideals and their thoughts on how they personally can prosper when really, idealistically, we should all prosper together, and we should all work to build a better world and a better community for the people to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now, the public comment period is closed. And it really is. Well, thank you very much for all of your comments. This issue is important to all of us. This is about our downtown, and all of us care deeply about our downtown. And we want that to be a place that everyone can enjoy. As I mentioned earlier, the purpose of the steering committee was to identify the key elements in the downtown. These last two months of outreach have been to define those key elements and the characteristics of those elements, the size, the massing, and the relative importance to the people that live, work, play, and enjoy our city. What we heard from this outreach was that the number-one issue is parking. We got that. It's parking. Number two was maintaining the community character with respect especially to building heights, what the buildings look like, and in housing numbers. Number three was an open space, a place where people could gather, and children could play. In order for the council and the community to have a reasonable discussion about the downtown, I believe that we need to discuss those key elements first. We need to place those three first and then determine where the others fit within those elements that are of the primary importance to the citizenry. And those elements, we heard, parking, community character, and open space. When this process first started, a word that we frequently heard from speakers was that they all wanted something that was iconic. That was the word we heard, iconic. We heard a little bit of that tonight. With the possibilities at hand from the Stockman's Association proposal, we have an opportunity to create something truly iconic and emblematic of Livermore's heritage. We also heard concerns about high-rise buildings, massive housing. And with that understood, this project cannot be built all at once. All these elements will have to be built in phases. And we heard that many times tonight about how is the best way to phase this project in. And in order to prevent changing any promises that have been made by this council at the appropriate time in our deliberations, what I would like to do, and what I intend to do, is at that time, propose an initiative to lock in those key elements around the housing numbers and the building heights to prevent this council or any future council from changing or increasing those numbers. At that time, I'd hope that the council would support having staff refine the language for an initiative to be placed before the voters, and that once those key elements are in place, unnecessary distractions can be avoided, and the council can move ahead to complete the best vision for our downtown where everyone can enjoy and participate in what really is a truly remarkable city and one that all of us up here want to make the best that it possibly can be. So, I want that to be able to address some of the concerns we heard tonight, that these things will not be able to be changed, they can be locked in, so there's going to be some comfort in that, that then we can really start looking at, once we've placed these three key elements, then we can begin to place the other ones that are not so key-important to the community. So, with that, Chairman of the Committee, any... We're not going to take this all the way to the morning, but I just wanted to give everybody a chance to have a comment, and then we can continue.
Sure. I just... I mean, obviously, most people have left, but I appreciate all the conversation today. I appreciate folks sticking to the subject and topics at hand. I learned, again, I think we gathered more information tonight than we had before this, and I think we all have learned additional information. And again, I want to thank every one of you that's still here and the folks at home that have been watching this and those that have had to leave earlier. I appreciate all the time, the energy, and enthusiasm you've put into this. It makes... And I don't... I was going to say it makes our job easier, but I'm not sure that's true. But it certainly... I mean, my thinking about this has evolved over the last several months. And I think it will continue to evolve for the next few days and weeks. And again, I want to thank every one of you for being there and for having the city of Livermore at your heart. It's obvious. So, thanks.
Well, since we're not being deliberative, I want to pretty much echo Councilmember Carling's comments. I really appreciate... I always look forward to the diversity of opinion from the public that shows up at council meetings, and I wish more would take the time to come down and address this. The way we heard... What we heard tonight was a lot of the same thing. We heard a lot of the same ideas from people who had been a year and a half ago, perhaps on different sides of the fence, coming together, moving towards a place where, you know, we're starting to make... Get some clarity out of it all. That was the thing that it brought to me, was that, "Oh, I didn't hear you say that last, you know, July twenty sixteen." And it's changed a lot. The dialogue has changed a lot. It's gotten more constructive, all of which will help us decide things, I think, in a more expeditious manner. Because in the back of my mind, I think, I don't remember if it was Mr. Dino or not, a couple of meetings ago, who just mentioned this, "Get this hotel done." And, you know, "Get the hotel done for the winegrowers, for everybody out there." And it's like, it's so important. I mean, we can't build in a week. I can put up a tent in five minutes, but I'll tell you what, this is going to take some time. And... But we're on the right track. We're heading the right direction, and I like what I heard tonight. Believe me, I wrote everybody's name and everybody's ideas down to study it when I get home. And hopefully, we can get in touch when we're offline and just talk over coffee. Once in a while, find me on the street, stop me, let's chat. And I'd love to hear that. But I had a great time being a listener tonight. And, believe me, you were heard. So, that's the last thought I want to drop any of their time.
Commissioner Warner?
Oh, I would echo the comments already made, and I really appreciate just how clear everybody was in their comments and efficient, and we got through this, and it was very, very well-done. So, I think we've heard a lot. I think we've got a lot of input. And personally, I'm prepared for our continuation meeting on Wednesday. And I think we can get through making some decisions on the parameters, so give staff enough guidance so that they can now develop a couple of plans, as was stated at the very beginning, that we can then come forth and fully analyze, and then one more round of the public input on those plans. But I think we've gathered a lot of information and that we have sufficient knowledge at this point to do a good job on directing staff to come up. So, I'm looking forward to Wednesday, and I really appreciate everything that's been said. And I'm very gratified that there was no opposition and unified support for the Stockman's proposal because I think that's a very key element here. And I just, you know, that's... That can defray a good fraction of the loan. It puts a lot of housing out there, and we've heard that housing is important. I was really pleased to see the number of people that have came out tonight in support of affordable housing and in particular workforce housing. I think that was very helpful. And again, we've heard that a hotel can go on either side, and I believe that where the hotel goes will be the result of a very careful, reasoned analysis, and it's not something that you can, at this point, actually predict because it's really complicated when you start getting into the financials, the staging, whether or not there's adequate parking. And everything I know about it and what I've looked into, it's not going to be simple, and there's no way to predict at this point what the answer is. So, I'm looking forward to the next couple of days.
Well, as I also mentioned earlier, we need to set the most important pieces first, you know, what the community believes is important. Because after all, the location of the hotel was number seven. And we've got a lot more important elements that we need to consider first. In fact, the hotel was... The location was fifty percent less important than the open space. So, with that, this meeting is going to be continued. I know we've had so much fun tonight. We're going to come back and do it again. So, this meeting is going to be continued to Wednesday, November twenty-ninth, seven PM, right back here in our council chambers. Thank you so much.
Mr. Honorable Mayor?
This wasn't yours.
You do need a motion to continue your meeting.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll move we continue. I'll move we continue this meeting until November twenty-seventh, twenty-ninth, sorry, November twenty-ninth at seven PM.
I'll second that.
Okay. Moved by Councilmember Carling, seconded by Councilmember Warner. Any discussion on the motion?
Just want to point out that we're not going to continue this meeting in the same sense of we're not starting through all this comment again.
No, the public hearing is...
The public hearing is over, and now we're into the deliberations, is my understanding.
That's right. We started the deliberations, and now we are going to continue.
Right.
Yeah. The meeting will continue with our deliberations. So, don't come in here with your speaker card thinking you're going to speak for three minutes because now it's our turn.
We can take the blue cards away.
Hide them. Okay. So, this wasn't nearly as painful as I thought. But then again, I'm developing a high threshold for pain.
I figured one o'clock.
Well, great. Well, thank you all, one and all.
Take our vote.
Oh, take a vote. Okay. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Very good.
All right. Meeting is continued. Thank you very much. Thank you, one and all.